It's the master. Yeah, somebody's got their. It's me. I'm off there.
Good evening. It's Monday, January 29th, and this is a meeting of the Southborough Planning Board. The Planning Board is now in session. The first item on the agenda is a discussion item, the Master Plan Implementation Committee's semi-annual report to the Planning Board. Mr. Maria.
Madam Chair, I have two members here. I have a quorum, so I'd like to call to order the Master Plan Implementation Committee is now in session.
And just to note, Mr. Warren is also here on Zoom.
Oh, great. Very good. Thank you. Would you guys like to come up? Okay. At our last, one of our last meetings with Planning Board, as you know, we decided, made the recommendation, and Planning Board agreed for a semi-annual report to the Planning Board. This one was particularly challenging because it hit right at the end of the year when we were putting together the annual report for the warrant, so it was very, quite, quite interesting. I gave you a number of documents, and I, if you had the chance to look through it, I don't also need to go through. At the last meeting in April, there were a lot of questions about what kind of information are we taking in and, you know, where committees are at with their goals and how are we tracking, and all kinds of really great questions, to be honest. So I wanted to give you a little bit more this time, so you could see sort of the intake, some of the intake forms, what I call the individual progress reports. And that's not really complete. It was what I had at the time that I provided it to you. But it's the type of information that, you know, the level of information that we're gathering from each of the boards and committees and departments. And if you would allow, I'll give you just a couple of highlights. There's really quite a lot getting done, and that's the surprising thing when you put together a report every six months and you say, wow, there really is a lot getting done. So some of these are repetitive. I'll just name a couple, but, you know, obviously, since we put together this report and doing the annual report at the same time, but in terms of local government and strategy and planning, you know, obviously, progress and funds appropriated for sidewalk development, Community Center Exploration Committee, I think it's nearing their work, to be honest, new pavement sidewalk management system. Under facilities, the hazmat plan has been developed and completed. Capital Improvement Planning Committee has developed a longer-term capital plan. Town technology improved and updated to cloud-based services to improve resiliency. And some of these others, obviously, MBTA communities hits a lot of our master plan goals for more housing in town. Potentially, hopefully, affordable housing and also housing diversity. A lot in environment and natural resources, and why I'm mentioning these is, these are, these are, these are all hitting somewhere in our master plan at the recommendation level, and it's just super exciting to see all the committees doing a lot of different work. So this cleanup of the breakneck hill dump, the stormwater management permitting has been updated to be fully compliant with state federal regulations. Pocket Park, as we know, the St. Mark's Street Pocket Park has been completed. Signage for National Historic Register has been installed, Territorial Committee appointed, a dog park planned for Lundblad Field. So this is just some of them. You notice that there's some differences between the annual report and the semi-annual report, but quite a lot of activity going on. What I wanted to share with you is that the master plan is, has listened to the Planning Board in terms of trying to move to the next stage, and that is really, as we're working with our boards and committees, to try to capture information that helps us understand where we might be able to help with coming up with a priority. So Planning Board was asked specifically if we could provide a priority input into the select board process. This was asked by Mr. Stivers. So last year, as you remember, Mr. Stivers put forward a list that, you know, he, were his kind of personal list, but he was able to use that as a select board member to work with the select board to, you know, for, to set priorities, you know, for their goal-setting process, which happens in around June or July, and asked whether or not the Planning Board had had input. So what we're trying to do for this next capture of information is to be a little bit more analytical about it, and there's a couple of different ideas of how to do this, and we have a couple of members here who've started to help, and I have started something as well. But to look a little bit more critically at, for example, we're hitting the short-term goals right now. We're at one to two years, and that was defined by the master plan as where we should have achieved short-term goals. So looking at what are those short-term goals, those could be low-hanging fruit, or it could be that a board or committee is having difficulty achieving that. So we want to be able to be a little bit more targeted, to see where could we give some input to, maybe that, maybe it's something that can be worked through the Master Plan Implementation Committee, to be honest, but, you know, possibly, there could be boards or committees that need some funding, or they need a grant, or they need some help in working with other committees, and so just looking at our data a little bit differently, I think will help us in the next five or six months, so that we can, you know, be a little more of a participant, right, because we were invited to provide some input to the select board. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and also have members here and online.
Bravo to you and to the, the whole Master Plan Implementation Committee. As this board knows, but just to reiterate for everybody else, the new master plan was adopted in 20, the beginning of 2022, and it was done almost entirely by a volunteer committee without any town funding, very, very, we got a very small grant at the beginning, but it was a huge lift, and the committee did a fabulous job. And now this is the first time that a master plan has been completed and not just stuck on a shelf. We now have a committee that's following up on those goals and recommendations, and speaking to all the other stakeholders, which allows for more collaboration in the town, so it's a win-win for us all, and thank you all so very much for all your hard work. Mr. Stein.
Debbie, thank you very much for the update and all your work. Appreciate it. I have no questions. Thanks.
Debbie and all, thank you very much. I think receiving the semi-annual report was really enlightening, and I think specifically as you followed up with all the 2023 accomplishments, again, to Mimi's point, like, I think it's really quite incredible that a 10-year plan was put forward, and we have people that are actually feeling accountable to help try and follow it up. So one, it was, I, it was illuminating for me because I wasn't aware of all these other things happening, so it was very educational. So thank you very much for the time. I know it was a challenge, knowing that you had the annual report on top of it. It's very rewarding just to see what, what is happening across town and across different areas. As you, you know, go down from local to environment to finance and technology, it was, it was a good read, a good update, and thank you. And I know I still owe you guys some thinking on how to quantify or qualify that prioritization list, and it's Deb and I will work together to try and make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brascio.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you. Great job on all this. Judith, Warren, Will, and Catherine and Sam as well. I read through all of the reports. The detail that you provided us was wonderful. It was good to see through all the boards and committees, all the meetings, and the hard work that you guys have put into this to take place. I'm actually, I have to say, I'm shocked at how much you guys have done. I sat on it briefly, but since I've left, I'm just floored at the amount of work you guys have done and what you've put together. So thank you very much. I know, I know how time-consuming it was for all of you, and it's great to see us moving forward in such a positive manner on, probably for the first time potentially ever, actually seeing things that went into the master plan, which was, what, maybe a year and a half, two years in the making? So again, it took a long time to put it all together, and now to see the work, the good work that you guys are doing is really fulfilling as a taxpayer, so thank you.
And one thing I forgot to mention, I'm one of the Southborough's reps on the Metro West Regional Collaborative, and we had our first meeting of the year, and on the agenda was accomplishments for 2023, and I'm like, oh my God, I can't remember what happened yesterday, so I pulled out your report and read right through it, so thank you for that. Does anyone in the audience have anything to add? Anyone on Zoom? Mr. Warren? Okay, thank you very much. The next item, item on the agenda is a discussion item, 21 Highland Future Use Committee.
The Master Plan Implementation Committee is adjourned.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
21 Highland Future Use Committee recommend a member. The last time that we discussed this, I had received a call from the Select Board Chair saying that this committee was on hold because they had a prospective buyer. So I guess they still have the same prospective buyer, but at the encouragement of local residents, they've decided to continue in, in two, two lanes and have this committee be formed and start working, I guess. So they're looking for a volunteer from the Planning Board to be on the committee.
I would be happy to if no one else has an interest in doing it.
Also, a motion is to recommend the nomination of Lisa Brascio to the 21 Highland Future Use Committee.
Second?
If a motion in a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes.
Stein, yes.
Ulihan, yes.
Damiri, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Thank you.
That was quick. Wow.
The next item on the agenda is MBTA communities.
I have the maps that were in the Dropbox. Let me get those open. What's that? Oh. So it's hard to hear me? Okay.
So do you want to do an update?
You can do the update, and just where we are.
I can do it too.
All right, and then you can fill in what I missed, because you have all the details. So as far as the MBTA communities, as you know, brief history, the Planning Board held two information sessions. They held two public outreach mapping sessions where the public was able to provide input on to where they felt properties should be included within the MBTA communities. Remember that the town needs 50 acres, 25 acres of which have to be a contiguous area, 10 acres have to be within a half a mile of the train station, and then there's an additional 15 acres that can be no less than five acre parcels. So the Planning Board also held some working sessions after the mapping information sessions because time's running out or winding down for the deadline to meet the mandate for the state. So in doing so, they used a matrix to tabulate the information and rank it, and came up with three areas that will be proposed for MBTA communities overlay districts. And one area is in, on Southville Road, which is just to the west of the, of the train station there. Then the other area is encompassing Madison Place up on Route 9, on the western end of Route 9. So right here, you'll see the train station.
And I just went up to Route 9, sorry.
And this is Route 9, so the center of that green area is Madison Place, and then there's a couple other parcels included. And then the third area to meet the required acreage is up on St. Martin?
St. Martin.
St. Martin Street, up near the northwest corner of Southborough, on the Marlborough Line. And so those three areas are shown on the map. You'll see one in the south. Yep, one along Route 9, and then the area up towards Marlborough, right there. So right now, that's what our engineering consultant, Bowler Engineering, has taken this information and put it into what's called the compliance model, which then identifies if the areas that were selected meet the basic requirements of density. So if you recall, one of the requirements was that you have to have a minimum of 15 units per acre by right to be built on these in the future if someone decides to. Just has to be a zoning criteria. So no one area has to meet that, but the average across the town of these areas has to meet that. So they ran this, these three areas into the compliance model, and it worked. There was a little bit of tweaking, I think, discussion of maybe one parcel or two. I don't even think we changed them. No, there was no change.
There's no change, but there's a little wiggle room in there somewhere.
Yeah, we had had a backup area in case we couldn't meet the 15 units per acre requirement, the density requirement in the town, in case there had to be a little bit of supplemental area, but that didn't have to be used. So this is the model, and right now that consultant is working with a specialist who does bylaw preparation and experience, and they're drafting, and we should be getting it probably tomorrow, a draft bylaw that meets the requirements of the state for MBTA communities. And one last note is that the zoning that lies underneath these districts is going to be kept for that. The only thing that this overlay zone will have is the increased density criteria that says 15 units per acre by right.
So the setbacks, the height, everything for each of these districts will be exactly as it is under, on the zoning now?
Yeah, so which is a good thing, because that means there's not a whole lot of change there, but those areas will be allowed to have 15 units, 15 units per acre by right built into the bylaw.
We have no idea. We're just looking to give the zoning there to create the opportunity for the 15 units per acre, and then when somebody comes in, they'll come to the Planning Board with a project where they'll go through a regular public hearing.
Yeah, understand, this is not to, this is not like a building project. This is not to, this is just making rules for that. If somebody wanted to build in that area, those are the rules they have to follow in order to meet the state's requirement to have that kind of housing density. Right? So there's nothing proposed yet. This is just an overlay list of information or criteria that anyone who wants to build there has to follow. And it's, you know.
And it's new zoning, so it is creating an opportunity.
So we'll, we'll get to.
We'll get to public questions in a minute. First, we'll go through the board and finish the update.
So that's basically what brought us here. So soon as we have the bylaw, then we can establish a schedule for a public hearing with the Planning Board, which is required for zoning amendment. So we anticipate, hopefully, sometime, the next meeting that we could manage that schedule-wise would be the February 20.
26.
Right, because it's a three-and-a-half-week timeframe to notify in the paper as required by state law. You have to have two Mondays in a row, and then the third Monday is the Planning Board public hearing opening, and that's already three weeks.
We, we were talking earlier, Karina and I, and we thought maybe that President's Day is the day that we could start a hearing, so the following day, I believe, is a select board meeting, and maybe open the public hearing there and do their presentation to them, see if we can get on their agenda. Does that sound like a good plan?
Food for thought, so we were just tossing that around. So the 26th, I don't know how to say this. So the 26th, the February 26th is the next scheduled Planning Board meeting, and the question was, if we can get the bylaw in time, could we possibly add a Planning Board meeting timeframe in order to start the public hearing? Because the annual town meeting is March 23rd.
Right, and that'll give us two regular Planning Board meetings.
25th.
So it'll give us one extra meeting with the Board of Selectmen, which we'd want to do anyway, a presentation, and then we'll have two regular Planning Board meetings to do public input or whatever we need with the public hearing.
Right, so if you look at the Planning Board's schedule, we have February 6th, and February 27th, and March 13th, and then it's the town, town meeting on March 25th. Am I looking at them?
No, that's right. That's last year. I was gonna say, where are you getting those numbers?
I'm sorry.
So the next meeting for the Planning Board?
Yes, I'm sorry. I got the wrong. The February 12th, February 26th, and March 11th are the three scheduled Planning Board meetings prior to the annual town meeting. Sorry about that mix-up. So it's too late for the 12th to have the public ads noticed properly for open meeting law. So February 26th is the next timeframe. However, if we get this in the paper, if we get the bylaw, and we get it in the paper on Wednesday, we could possibly do the earliest meeting on the 20th. 20th is probably a select board meeting, so the week of that.
That's, I believe, Karina, that's school vacation week, so I'm not sure that they're meeting.
Oh, so they might not have.
They may not have a meeting.
Okay. So we were just saying if, if, because there was, there was the idea that the Select Board would need to attend the first public hearing for the Planning Board in order to get up to speed on the MBTAs, and with the time crunch, I thought maybe the other way around, but that's, that's right. That's why we don't usually have a Planning Board meeting scheduled the week of school vacation.
So I, me personally, I would suggest that we hold a meeting ourselves, because I think the first meeting is going to be very time-consuming, and I don't know if the Select Board have the bandwidth on top of everything else before town meeting to put that on their agenda. So that's, that's just a suggestion from me.
And also, we don't have the bylaw in hand. It's anticipated tomorrow.
So when is the first, forget about the 26th, like, when is the first day that we could actually hold a public hearing?
The 19th.
And that's on holiday.
We can't hold one on the Friday that, or the Thursday, the 15th?
No, because let's say the 29th. So if we get the legal ad in this week, it'll run on the 5th and the 12th. And then that's 14 days till the 19th, so any 15, 16, it doesn't meet the required 14-days' notice.
So and what day is the town meeting?
23rd of March.
20, 20.
So we might, I mean, the Planning Board has done this before, where we just have more meetings. And so we would be meeting, you know, possibly, like, I would suggest maybe the 26th, the 4th, and the 11th, which is a lot, but I think if we, if we go about it that way, it's possible we might be able to get it done.
So you're saying, hold the 26th and have another meeting after that in between?
The 4th, and the, is, do we have a meeting on the March 11th, anyway?
Yes, so you'd interject a meeting in between those two.
Did you say town meeting's the 26th?
23rd.
Okay. Okay.
We could add one to the February vacation week.
I can't, I, I won't be here on the 18th. That's selfishly why I'm not, you know, putting, pushing for any, but if you guys want to meet on the 18th, you know, go for it.
So adding the 4th and the 18th of March.
I'm afraid so, because something like this.
It's important.
I don't see any other way of this happening, personally.
So Marty, you just said the 4th and the 18th to add?
Of March?
Yep.
We could do this.
Yep.
And the extra meetings will just be MBTA?
Yeah, we won't, I don't think we should add any agendas.
Right, right.
Yeah. What is the rest?
Is everyone else on board with that? Yeah?
And that assumes like a rooms available on those days?
I'll make sure. Yep.
Can we do? Can we do public hearings for a warrant article on Zoom if necessary?
Yeah.
And have it?
As long as the public can participate.
Yeah.
So we anticipate these to be hybrid, but so it will be in person with the Zoom.
As many as we can, yeah.
Yeah, Marty just pointed out, we don't know if the, the hearing room is going to be available every, all these days, but.
Okay, and the timeframe, you're still hoping to keep it at a 6:30 PM?
Okay.
So we'll check the dates to make sure the rooms are available, the, the physical room, and there are three virtual meeting rooms, so that shouldn't be a problem. It's this, this room here. Just make sure.
And just to verify, and I think there was a consensus on this, that we are looking to require the minimum 10% affordability. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, great job. Thanks again for the update, and it's going to be a crunch, but it's possible.
I have a question on affordability.
What was saying?
Right here. The process, if we wanted to increase it?
So 311?
Yeah. We would have to hire a consultant to prove that it would still be doable for a proponent to make money at a higher percentage. I don't, I, personally, and we'll see what the rest of the board thinks, I think that's, I think we get through this phase and become compliant, and then if we want to increase the affordability, we can work up on that at a future meeting, but I think if we were to try and tackle that now, we wouldn't get.
Yeah, it's a 90-day turnaround once you send it, once we come up with it and send it into DHCD, which is now EO, EO, whatever. Yeah, 90-day turnaround at least.
Yeah, it's just the, I was thinking about the, you know, we've said we have the 340Bs. One of them's in litigation. I'm not sure. One of them has an attorney, and the other one, town council says has a significant issue. So I don't know that we can count on the 40Bs as helping us on the affordability, and I just was wondering if, you know, what that process might look like. So it would have to be done by town meeting, is?
So my suggestion would be to get this on the books, you know, with the 10%, because we've already acknowledged that they're going to have that put, written into the bylaw.
Yep.
And then if we really want to do the 20%, we can work on that next year for another addition to this in the, in the fall. um addition to this in the in the following year, give us a lot more time to really figure it out. When something's on the books, we can work with it.
If this passes town meeting, the annual, and there is a fall town meeting, why could we not work, do the study that needs to be done and possibly bring it back to make the change for a a fall town meeting?
That sounds like a plan.
I mean, that's just a thought, but.
I haven't looked into.
I agree, Deb, I think it's important, I think it's really important.
Okay.
Well, I just that we've been, I I'm just putting it into relation to what else is going on in town and um we might find that the other forty Bs aren't moving very quickly and we might have an opportunity here, that's all. That's a good suggestion, thanks.
So food for thought is that we would need funding and you'd have to procure someone depending on the manner you procure them would depend on, unless we are on on the cost of the um analysis that's required. So the the other part of that is um the planning agencies or MHP who's currently granting. There may still be additional funds there for um support like that. So we'd have to look into if they're actually supporting that extra step with grant money, my guess is they probably are.
Hmm.
But we don't know for sure. Because we were moving forward with just the ten percent at this point, but we can look into it further.
We can report back on it next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone in the audience have a question? Yes, sir, um come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and your address.
Uh, thank you, my name is John Cage. Hear me now, I guess, better. Uh, thanks, my name is John Cage, thanks for the opportunity uh to ask some questions, um. Do you mind changing that slide to the the Porterville area one?
Can you give your address?
Oh, sorry, Sixth Parker Street.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um.
It's the hatched areas.
It's the hatched areas?
Yes. And the different colors are different zonings that are underlying.
All right, yeah, because I I had a question about the park there and I thought from the bylaw I saw earlier that the park was included, but that's not the case, right? The park is not included in this?
It it's excluded land, but it it can be included to make the lots contiguous. It has to be five contiguous acres. And we couldn't, the only way to do that is to have the park in there to make the lots contiguous.
Oh, okay.
But it is excluded land.
So is?
It's counted towards the acreage.
But it can't be developed? Okay. Um, and so with that, okay, so the park can't be developed in any way, or septic or something of that nature? Okay, uh, and the other question was uh just septic itself, uh with fifteen units per acre. You know, what is the town's requirements on septic, is that being changed?
No, the the uh wastewater would have to be uh dealt with by the proponent of the the project. And, you know, if they couldn't get fifteen units in and get the septic to work, then they couldn't get it in, but the the uh state rules and border health rules don't change at all.
Uh, and I guess the last question, uh, the hatched area in my right, your left, I guess, um, across the road on eighty five. Uh, I know part of that is a parking lot, which is not an issue, but uh up on the edge, up on the top edge, that is like wetlands, I believe. I thought that was area that was not allowed to be uh used.
It's not, it's excluded also, but it was allowed to be added because we needed it to make the lots contiguous.
All right, that was all my questions, thank you.
Mimi, can you, could you just clarify? When you say these lots are included, can you just point them out to everybody, just um?
Yeah. It's the that triangle in the middle, the pink right, yes.
Those two, that's actually two little parcels. And see under her thing how many parcels are there, but in this area.
Right along.
So I guess I'm not really particularly clear, like, so.
Yep. Yep.
That's not included.
That's not included, but um they have the another parcel right here that is like a dirt area right now for the train. Yep. That's included, right there. I don't know why it's.
Included and can be developed. So I guess I want to be clear about what's included and is excluded land and what is included that can be developed if someone were to buy the land or take it over and build on it.
So if you put up the spreadsheet um that has the parcels? Oh, sorry, if you put up the spreadsheet that has the um the parcels listed and then the map that we originally sent to Bowler, you can see the lots better and the lots are also defined in the spreadsheet, so we'll be able to.
Yeah, it might, it's definitely going to be helpful for the public hearings if there's any way to.
Yeah, we'll clean up those maps, they'll be much bigger and they'll show every parcel and the zoning.
That was a prelim, that the images you just saw were preliminary mapping from Bowler after they ran ran the compliance model and said, here are the three locations that were, it was more of an internal image.
Yeah, because I do think like it's really important for people in that area to realize that although all that land is identified, it's not all developable. Like as um John just indicated in his question, so I think it's, we need to be clear what can be developed and what can't.
I think this is much better because we have the list of properties here and that's what's grayed out. Right here, and again, this this parcel right here is the Fitzgerald Store. Um, this is the roadway. Um, here's the triangle that's in between the streets there.
We can certainly get more detail, I could show the wetlands.
And you can see the wetlands here already in the green, see here?
But but I would even say that's still included in your map, but it's not clear for me, or I don't think anyone looking at it.
Yeah.
If someone were to buy property
Yeah.
in that triangle, let's say that triangle sold, could they develop with MBTA community?
I think they could in that area, wasn't that?
So it's a park.
It's town owned.
It's town owned.
If that is town owned right now, then it's.
Excluded.
Excluded, however, the town could sell that.
Okay.
We can develop town under utilized parcels.
Yeah, so I just think we need to be really clear.
Yeah.
Um, because it's not clear for me here.
Yeah, and that's Commonwealth of Mass along Corderville.
Okay. So that can't be developed either.
No.
Okay.
Unless they sell it, well, but it's not, neither are really developable.
Perfect.
So. Can we see also for the park, um, I can't think of what chapter it is that gives parks protection. I want to say chapter fifty one.
Ninety seven.
Ninety seven, thank you. Maybe if we could just see if that qualifies under ninety seven, that it's protected um as well, that might just cement it instead of saying, well, maybe the town could sell it and it could be developed.
And you're talking specifically about this triangle?
Yes.
And just one more question, so from point of clarity, it's just those two properties we identified that are kind of excluded land in the land. Okay. Hopefully that's clear.
The other one is the four dash two right here.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Anna Shamps. Um, I live at two seven two Corderville Road, which is right there at the tip of that triangle where it's all the wetlands are. My Barney, thanks for those questions because I'm still, I don't understand how we can have these areas shaded in and say that they're not going to be developed. I I don't understand where that's coming from. Um, I also don't understand that the um this met with compliance with tweaks. What does that mean? What were the tweaks that were made? To cut, to get these to be compliant?
That was probably the wrong word to use. The the lots weren't tweaked from what was submitted and agreed to. Um, I think what I was trying to get at is that my my initial thought when I first started doing this, and I think the public may have thought, that fifteen units per acre is required on all these areas. And we've since learned that it's the, like, the cumulative of all the areas, the average, that has to come out through this compliance model, this program they run that shows the town meets fifteen units per acre. So for example, one area might have, like this area, might have eleven units per acre ability to build out in the future. But another one, say up in Marlboro, and you can't hold me to these because I'm just giving you an example.
For instance.
Might have higher density ability and it averages out the two or the three parcels, or the three overlay districts. So tweaking was the wrong word.
Okay.
What was selected, what was, I think we had conversations to make sure that it was working with them, with the with the engineer. Um, in doing that, we were saying, what if you did this and this, but it came back to what was presented.
Um, I do have um just a couple of comments. We have that park and our ta- our side of town does not get any attention from South Grove. And this was a big deal, I don't know about anybody else who lives on that in that neighborhood, but it was a big deal for me and my family to have that park carved out in the Corderville sign. And um I I'm pretty emotional about the fact that it might be lost. And that really upsets me. Um, the other thing that upsets me is the wetlands that um we have a trail cam in our backyard, uh, brook goes right through our backyard. We have so much wildlife back there, it's a beautiful, beautiful place. And and what any kind of development will do to that wetlands, I don't know. Um, but it's an unnamed brook, but it's a brook, it's beautiful. And that also really, really concerns me because that, there is a lot of wetlands in that area. You know, from South, from Southville Road all the way up to um Woodland Road, there's wetlands back there. Um, so I just wanted to um be heard on that. We, I love, I love our little park and I would hate to see that go because we don't have a lot on that side of town and it means a lot to us. Thank you.
Yeah, we can look into that, to the Article ninety seven, so it is, it's confusing because it's excluded land, like um roads and streets are excluded, but they can, you can have lots are considered contiguous across them. So that was the same with that, the park and the Commonwealth of Mass land there. It was used to make the lots contiguous.
So if I can ask a question, so theoretically, we could have undevelopable wetlands that there is no possible way to develop but still have it part of the zoning district in order to make it compliant in terms of all the lots being next to each other. Does that make sense?
If you're going to zone it, what's going to stop someone from coming in and developing?
Because it's excluded.
I don't know if I, I don't know if I trust it, I don't know if I trust it. And that's where, that's really the bottom line. If you zone that and someone comes in and buys it.
Well, so it's zoned as residential B right now.
Okay.
So if someone came in and bought it, they could put a house on it, but it's town, it's a town owned park. And if you look at it, the cha- I don't think that it has any of the the setbacks so that you'd be able to put anything.
Yeah, as it is right now, if somebody did that, let's say hypothetically, if somebody bought that and put a house on it, it would be not very difficult to have an attorney appeal that or even call the building department, they would have to tear it down.
But I mean.
It's there's, I mean.
That, that, it's up though. You know, it it if someone put it up, it's up, getting it torn down is a whole, it's, I'm I'm a little bit jaded as far as trusting the process um of having something zoned a certain way and and saying, but no, we'll never, people have have built on wetlands, it's happened. And I'm just, like I said, I'm a little bit jaded and nervous that you you tell me that no one's going to build on these wetlands, that's I don't know if I I can trust that. And that's where I'm coming from. Because it has happened in town. And and I've often questioned, why are they building there, it's wetlands and it's happened. So that's where, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
The state does.
Mimi, can I ask, kind of on that point, we know that the bylaw allows for the excluded land to be counted just towards the acreage. If it allows that, is there any way that it can actually be called excluded? Or, you know, some way to word it within the bylaw that um it's it's only there to meet the compliance of the acreage for the for the area? Um, again, I don't know the answer to that, maybe that's something we can ask Bowler or, you know, I mean, I I understand Anne's nervousness, we've kind of all seen things, I mean, Mimi and I know there was property next to us that was, you know, supposed to be wet and it's it's now built. So um I would be interested to see if there was any way we could find that out. What I'm thinking is check with the select board and see if possibly they'll transfer that part to the care and control of the Conservation Commission. And then it's automatically under chapter, Article ninety seven protection.
So if I may add, um, you may want to check out on the um and it will, it will probably help you feel a little bit better about it. But the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, it's the E O H L C. You can see them through mass.gov, okay? So this was their latest guideline. And in here are definitions that describe, if you scroll down, they're alphabetical and the definitions. Um, on page two at the bottom, it describes developable land, developable public land. And then it also um describes excluded land in that. This just happens to be a redlined version we found really quickly um of what their latest changes were when they changed their name from DHCD to EO H L C. But if you go to this document, it's very easy to find online, you can also contact.
Can we put it on our website?
Yeah, it may already be there, um, but you can call us and we'll show you where to find that. And if it's not there, we'll put it up on the planning website. But it's not a very long document and you can read through it and it won't be the redlined one. And if you look at the definitions, that'll help you because there are um excluded land is, for example, all publicly owned land except for lots or portions of lots determined to be developable public land. All rivers, streams, lakes, ponds, all wetland resource areas to go together with buffer zone around wetlands and water by protected open space and recreational land that is legally protected in perpetuity. For example, land owned by a local land trust or subject to conservation restriction or that is likely to remain undeveloped due to functional or traditional use. All public rights away and private rights away. So you see there, that area is probably protected in some fashion, but it could also probably be come more protected depending on it. So that, those three definitions right there will be very helpful, you can read through those at your own pace and understand them, and then if you have questions, you can give us a call and we'll try and help you with that.
One last thing, Mimi, can we just, I, that was a great idea that you came up with suggest to the select board to put it under the care and control of CONCOM. We've done it for a multitude of parcels in the last year or so. Um, is is that something that we can all agree to have Mimi and Karina do? To ask the suggestion? Everyone under agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll have to check with the CONCOM too.
So you want me to follow up with con- with um the conservation agent on um the process to protect this, these particular, this particular parcel, the triangle?
I'd start with the the select board and then um in let the conservation agent know what we're thinking.
Okay, so the question is, um, what would be the process to protect that four dash one parcel?
To transfer it to the care and control of the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
It should be relatively easy and quick if they're willing to do it. I mean, we did a parcel just before I left the select board, so. Yeah.
Um, typically I, I went to, uh, Melissa just to see if there was an interest. Now she couldn't speak for the commission, but as the agent, you know, she kind of gave us the go ahead and then the select board went with it from there. And then they'll have a meeting to accept it after.
Lisa, are you aware if that parcel was mentioned anywhere in the open space and recreation plan? We'll have to look. It's online. That's another place that could be on a list already.
I don't know, Karina, sorry.
Probably not. Yeah. And there's, there are properties identified as priorities in that open space and recreation plan that.
So probably.
I don't know. I'm just kind of throwing it out there that we could look at. Okay.
Any other questions or comment?
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Chris Legatsky. Um, I'm the senior director at Gray Star on the real estate development team with offices at One Federal Street in Boston. Um, and, um, I and my team have been tracking the work that this board has been doing to reach the, the, the very high and challenging goals set forth by the state and on their timeline. And I commend you all for, for everything that's been done to date. Um, I have submitted comments prior to tonight's meeting as well as a, the working session that happened in early January. Um, understanding that the district maps, uh, are a work in progress and, and this is an opportunity to voice those comments. We're, I'm here tonight, um, uh, to, uh, to basically summarize those and invite any, any discussion that, uh, the board might be interested in. Uh, so the two parcels that I'm referring to, I believe there were District One under the, the matrix scoring process, but um, to describe them, they're roughly thirty-five and a half acres of contiguous privately owned land, uh, located along Crystal Pond Road, um, just to the south of the Madison Place District and, and development on Route Nine. Um, these parcels are, yeah, essentially just, just there to the southwest of Crystal Pond. That's perfect. Thank you, Colleen. So labeled as five and six on this map, um, they are zoned in the industrial park, um, zoning district currently. So we, we think that there's a unique opportunity in these parcels that we, we, I would, I would, um, ask the board to, to reconsider based on. Um, we think there's a great, great, um, great opportunity here to effectively meet the housing goals, uh, that have been set forth by the state. Um, and expand and diversify South Borough's housing stock, um, while doing it in a way that mitigates public impacts to roads, infrastructure, utilities and residential neighborhoods. And this being thirty-five and a half acres is obviously a substantial part of the, the, um, the landmass required outside of the half mile, um, proximity to the, to the train station. Um, so respectfully, we're here to, to request that the board consider these parcels as, as for further review as part of the process. Um, I've invited, um, my land use counsel Greg here to, to, um, help speak to some of the points as to why we think that this makes sense and, and brings forward a nice alignment of, of private town and, and state level, um, initiatives. Um, as well as give some feedback on, on some of the districts that have been, um, identified for study by Bowler and the board today. So we'll hand it over to Greg if that's okay.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Greg Sampson with Sullivan and Worcester. Um, Chris provided a pretty good introduction, so I'll be brief. Um, we just were trying to follow along with the process that the board went through to itemize and to, to look at the different parcels. And we were looking at these as being an opportunity as well. Um, we think there, it, it did. There were a lot of considerations made, um, in particular, uh, with respect to existing infrastructure with I think the board may realize that this was built out for potential R and D and office development of two million square feet. So the roadways and the infrastructure utilities were all provided, wastewater treatment, um, plant was considered. So the site, these two lots together do have great infrastructure capability between what's been built and what's been envisioned for the site. Uh, we know that the, the parcels scored a little lower on a couple of the mid, um, scorings for, uh, open space. And I believe it was tree removal. And I think one thing to keep in mind is, you know, we're looking at this as being, um, the potential of a industrial development as a right and, you know, the, those considerations are a little different. If you look at what could happen there versus the exit current conditions. A lot of the land with the original subdivision was, um, put into conservation restriction, um, at the time. The subdivision was done in contemplation of that, uh, two million square foot project. So we think there has been a good effort of conservation and dedication of land to open space. And most of the pond areas, I think, are covered by that, um, to the, to the east of Lot Six. Um, so we're hoping, you know, when we look at the scoring, we thought these actually fared a little better than the outcome. Uh, and we do respect the work that went into it and we're not trying to, um, throw a wrench in the process. Um, we did have some concerns on a couple of the other, uh, areas that were identified. Uh, in particular, I think it was Area Twenty-One, which was the standalone parcel on the edge of town, which I think was, um, recognized as actually has no access from South Borough. I think that may, I'd be concerned that that would not, uh, pass the, the review based upon the fact that there's no private access in South Borough and the only access to the site is through Marlborough in an area where multifamily is forbidden. So the fact that you can't access the site or, and, and through a district that allows multifamily prevents multifamily from ever being built on this parcel. I just would raise that as a potential concern. And I do have, um, another concern about the Madison Place being a forty B. The entire site is subject to a twenty-five percent affordability requirement, um, which the guidance my planning board had, I, I, my understanding was some of those restrictions, uh, that, that were in place that would prohibit additional development without a discretionary approval wouldn't satisfy the as of right requirement. So again, I, I don't want to pretend that I've done all the analysis so that we've gone that far, but I just, you know, we thought this site would possibly be a helpful inclusion in the, um, in the town's proposal. Uh, we'd be happy to sit down with the staff of the board again to look at options for carving out a portion of it or, you know, framing the zoning so that it worked well for the town. But we really do think it does provide, it's less than three miles by car, uh, by straight shot on backroads to this train station and also has good access to, uh, Route Nine, obviously. So we thought it had a lot of potential for, uh, the kind of, um, multifamily dwellings that are envisioned by the MBTA communities.
So what is it that you can't do now that you want to do? That, like, what, what, what's the, let's just cut right to the, what's that?
Residential is not allowed.
Well, you could do it under forty B. So why not do that instead of trying to change our MBTA communities back?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll feel that. So I think forty B is a, a possibility. Um, I think that in our experience, if there's, if there's a planning initiative taking place here that might align the housing production goals, um, um, with the, the, the potential, um, development of this, the, these parcels, then better to try to find that alignment than to, to run parallel paths. Um, so rather than allow these parcels to sort of sit on the side of this, the zoning initiative, allow for multifamily by right under these MBTA community districts and then come back with a forty B at a later date. Um, our, 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 our thought here is we would just like to, to voice, so we think that there's a great opportunity here, whether it's forty B or under the MBTA Communities Act.
Okay.
Um, but it's.
Sorry, it's the same thing, right? Like, there's not, you don't get one thing with MBTA that you wouldn't get with forty B, right?
Well, I think the process is quite different. There's.
Well, we're going to have a ten percent anyway.
We have twenty-five under forty B.
That's true.
And, and under the, the permitting process as well. I mean, forty, forty Bs can, can, can be a challenge. I think that there's a different level of community participation than what you're affording here. Um, obviously going through a state process and I, I don't need to educate anyone here about what the stigmas of forty B are. So the thought was bring it here early and, you know, and, and, and welcome any feedback on what the best route to pursue that kind of development might be.
Okay.
So initially, way at the beginning of this, that was the initial thought was to include those sites. There was huge pushback. Um, then we went through the, the mapping process with the residents and those sites did not, were not mapped. Um, as a consideration after our meeting, I asked that those sites be considered. They were, they didn't meet the criteria. And we now have sites that have gone through the, according to our, uh, consultant have gone through the compliance model and pass.
What, what, what were the criteria that this failed on? I'm sorry if you're not, not knowing that. The scoring matrix or are there?
I, I don't have it right in front of me, but we picked it, yeah.
Okay. And I, it, going back to Greg's comment, we're not, not looking to throw a wrench in the process. I know that there is a public information and public engagement process. I think that, um, you know, this, this is obviously a, a larger forum and, and, and a, a broader discussion. Um, I think from a, you know, from a, from a location perspective and separation from residential neighborhoods and, and the other, the other benefits that, that we see in the site, um, we're, we're, we're big believers that this is, this is a smart location for, for, um, of this type of, of, of housing development. Um, so I understand it, it, it didn't fit in earlier in the process. And, you know, it fell out through whatever, um, sort of decisions that were made along the way to obviously get to where you are today. Um, which is why, you know, we're here to, to acknowledge all that work and decision-making process, but just ask that it be reconsidered.
Well, I think it was reconsidered. It fell out at the beginning. You asked it to be considered. It was reconsidered. It didn't make it through then either. So I think it's time to, to move on. Anyone else on the board have a question or comment?
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two hands up, Benson.
My name is Bob Heavy. I submitted my property on Route Nine and Woodland Road for this program. I have thirteen acres of land there. I was only going to use five acres for the housing. I had planned to give the remaining land of the town to the conservation board because we, about the, uh, conservation land that's currently off of Oak Hill Road, uh, as well as the land on Woodland. We own the property that could tie these two pieces together that the town already has. So you could have contiguous walks and conservationally. We have a lot of wildlife out in the back. I foolishly, uh, years ago, uh, allowed one of our tenants, I thought he was just kidding me, to go out deer hunting out there. And he got a permit and he did go out deer hunting before I found out. I stopped it, but it turned out that that's a hell of a place to go deer hunting, I guess. I think it'd be perfect for the town. You'd be gaining at no cost a great piece of conservation land. And we meet all the requirements, uh, for your program. We're on Route Nine, so we have main road access. We wouldn't be egressing in or off of Route Nine. We'd be egressing off Woodland Road, which is a secondary road. We have no abutis, residential abutis. We have a drugstore. Uh, behind the drugstore, there are some townhouses on a forty, forty B townhouses that I'm, I built. And you really won't be able to see this project from there. I guess if you go up on your roof or something, you probably might be able to see, see them, but normal usage, they won't see them. And there's no one on Woodland Road.
So, um.
And I don't know why it was not accepted. I guess that's why I'm here.
So it was considered, it went through our criteria and it didn't rank up at the, we picked the top three and it wasn't one of the top three.
Why wasn't?
I, I don't have all of the rankings right in front of me. I can, uh, I can look for that and.
I'd like to know why. Yeah, very much. I'd like to know why it was not ranked. Uh, I don't know. I've listened to and, and followed what you did accept. And it's better qualified than a lot of the places. I mean, I just saw what, I know you have to have ten acres down near the train station. But I think there's even better spots down there that are more, could be developed a lot easier. There's some commercial property down there. It's within walking distance of the train station. So I don't think that the people doing all of this research are really hitting the nail on the head. And, and I don't, I mean, I'm not arguing about what you do down near the train station, but you're really trying to jam something in to land that isn't connected. And you're justifying why you can do that, when in fact there are pieces of land that are connected. But I think if you spoke to the owners, there'd be, there's some construction companies down there. I'm sure they could be tempted to move somewhere else.
So there wa- there wasn't ten contiguous acres within a half mile down there because they were two, there were two different parcels we were considering down there.
Well, it's Ernie Quigley's property down there. And then there's some other small construction companies down there. Uh, and I don't think anybody ever approached anything to see if they'd be interested. But that's not my, my issue.
Well, so we're not, we're not approaching property owners.
Okay. But I would like someone to get back to me and tell me why my buildings, my, my property wasn't accepted.
Okay.
I, I've spoken to people and one person said, well, you've got historical buildings, but those buildings aren't even inhabited. I'm, I'm trying to get my last two tenants out of them. I, I arranged for one of them to move into another building I'm in. I, I have rather. And I'm, I'm working with the last tenant and then I'm demolishing those buildings. So then we're going to be sitting looking at some.
Email the planning office and we'll send you the, the criteria of what, where your parcel's ranked.
I'd appreciate that.
Uh, I was just going to add that I can pull it up here and, um, there's thirteen eighty-four, um, Turnpike is part of that. Thirteen point three four one acres is an open space priority parcel. So that was immediately removed from the calculations.
Um, was removed?
Removed from the calculations because it was identified as an open space priority parcel.
Open space?
Yes, the Open Space Commission had identified that as a priority parcel.
As a priorities parcel?
Yes.
Well, we weren't going to put anything on it, but we, we were going to leave, give that to the town for conservation.
Right. So when we were doing the calculations, um, those thirteen acres got taken out of the, the other, um, acreage. And so I think that left, um, just under nine acres remaining. And then there are, um, three pri- there are three properties, one at seventy-two Turnpike, which is a nineteen hundred date. That's one point nine eight four acres. And then there's a, uh, two Woodland and eighty-eight Turnpike, both with, um, historic dates of nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen hundred. So those were excluded. So that takes it, um, below where it would be the requirement to at least make the five acres.
But that's what I said, those buildings, I've already gone to the town, uh, building department to pull permits to demolish those. They're not safe. Uh, they're not inhabited. And, uh, and I, I'm not, I, I, I've been trying to get them accepted by the building department for a few years now. And every time I do one thing, there's ten more things that needs doing. They're not, you can't fix them. They're not repairable. So those should not be listed. They're going to be demolished very shortly.
Thirteen fourteen. So out of the fifteen parcels, that would have been, um, one.
Thirteen acres there.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five. That would have been the, the sixth, the next one down, just for awareness on a planning board. So as we ranked the five areas, that would have been the next one down, based on the rankings through the, um, rubric.
Was that because of the houses? Is that why I'd rank down that?
Um, one was the non-motor access to MBTA station, um, which a lot, that was a ranking between one and five. So one means there's really no way, you need a car or some sort of mobile to get there.
Car or a bike or something. It's straight out Woodland.
Um, twelve. Where else did you, you ranked, um, highest on transfer pay, I, do you want me to? I, I can't, it's too much for me to try and present this. Yep.
I would take our chairperson's recommendation that we do this via email outside of, of the hearing, outside of this meeting.
But we have all of this documented.
Provide you with more details.
Could I stop by and pick that up at your office?
Yeah.
And I'll add, this was discussed in two working meetings as well and, and all of these, uh, the documents that Marnie has been referring to were up on the screen and, um.
I haven't been to all of them.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that, that
In and out of state.
The documents are public record. Um, but if, if you're interested even to go back to see the working group meetings, they are online. You can access them through YouTube, through Southborough Access Media.
Okay, well, I. Okay. If I could.
Can you have people with their hands raised? Hello, Mr. Perry.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could just introduce yourself and give your address.
Yes, certainly. My name is David Perry. I live at 20 Main Street in Southborough. Well, thank you for having this meeting. I've got a number of questions. Can I ask just this question first? Is this the one and only public hearing you're required to have by state law before you do rezonings? Is that this, is that this meeting now?
This isn't a public hearing, it's a discussion.
Oh, I see, okay. I'm sorry, I just happened to turn on the TV, so, okay, it's not the public hearing, it's a discussion, okay, good. Okay, let's go on to the next question. Could I go down to, but I do want to support Mr. Heavey's point about clarification about why things are being eliminated. It's just not clear to me at all. I mean, just for instance, he mentioned that there were two, or someone mentioned, one of your members mentioned that two of the buildings there are old enough to be possibly classified as historic, but when I called your town of planning administrator about this matter about two weeks ago, she told me that just because the building is old and might meet the historic criteria does not mean they're excluded. She said to me that they're only excluded if they're on the list of historic buildings. So what is the answer to that, please? Can we have clarification on that matter? On that issue? Does a building, is a property a lot excluded if it has a building on it which is old, is old enough to be classified as historic? Or must it be listed in the state register as being historic? What is the answer to that question, please?
If a building is, or 1925 or older, it was excluded.
Well, that's not what I was told by your planning administrator. Because I'm sorry, I don't want to go, you know. Okay, so you're telling me that any property which has a building older than 1925 is automatically excluded? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Hello?
Yeah, that's correct.
But I mean, that's, well, I just simply asked.
That was the criteria that we went by, David.
Okay, well, I can, I have a right to object to the criteria, don't I? I mean, I think that criteria is just nonsense. I mean, there are lots of old buildings older than 25, but they're not necessarily clarified as, you know, worthy of preservation. They're simply old. Many of them may be falling down to rubbish and unattractive. So to simply exclude all lots which happen to have buildings older than 1925 is just making any sense to me.
Mr. Perry?
Anyway, let's go on to my, go ahead.
This is Marnie. I just wanted to write that in the selection criteria that we provided on the rubric, it's stated, historic properties will be eliminated from overlay. Historic is defined as 1925 properties or prior were removed from identified parcels due to the demolition bylaw that exists in our town, indicating additional requirements for developers. So we were trying to eliminate any of those situations, and so that was a decision made by the planning board. So that is in writing, and you can certainly reference that in the rubric that we made public.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification. But, you know, and just go back from Mr. Heavey who owns that property, said, just said he was going to go for a demolition permit, so that, that problem could be eliminated by a property in a couple of weeks, a week or, you know, a couple of months or whatever. Well, anyway, let's go on to my next question, please. Anyway, I do object to that criteria. I don't think it makes any sense. Let's go, can we go back to the downtown, your station area? I want to know, please, why is Fitzgerald's store lot excluded? The one with the store on it? Why is that excluded, but their parking lot is included? Why is that distinction made?
The store is older than 1925.
Okay, so there we go again. You're classified that, but surely you've included north of that road, you've included two properties, two properties with houses on them, aren't those houses older than 1925? Not the park, but next to the park on the left, to the west of the park? Are they older than 1925? In which case they should be excluded? Well, it's, I don't expect you to answer these questions now, and I'm just raising them, because I just think it's a, you have a problem here, just excluding lot, properties which happen to have an old, possibly ugly and building not worth saving, and just excluding it outright, because you may be, you may be eliminating properties which are very suitable for multifamily by using that criteria. Anyway, I appreciate your work on it. Best of luck. Bye, ma.
Is there anyone else online? No more? Yes, sir.
David Malakia lives at 3 Cottage Street, which is right across there. So our building, our house is older than that, and it's part of the inclusion. That wasn't even my question. So I do wonder why it's on there. So what I'm just wondering is, in a multifamily, I don't even know anything about the law, but what can be built there? So if I sell my property, if somebody, if my neighbor sells their property right across the street, there's a single family growing, what can be built there? What are we talking about?
So, so this is just a zoning overlay, which will allow 15 units per acre of multifamily housing, but the underlying zoning remains. So that means that it has to have the frontage that's required under that district. It needs the setbacks that are required under that district, the height, and it also has to meet the Board of Health and the state Title V requirements for SEPTIC.
Okay. But I guess I just have to get familiar with what is possible to be built.
Yeah, I wouldn't know how to figure that out, but it's probably not 15 units.
Also, that's right across the street, it's 26 acres. What can be built? Maybe look some possibility.
The Board of Health trumps all of this, so if it doesn't perk properly for more than two units, then two units is it.
And the triangle, it's been a wonderful addition to our life, no question about that. If that were to be sold by the town to comply with this, that would be real shit.
So we're going to work on that. Yes, sir.
What, Paul Fitzgerald, I'm actually with Dell Technologies, formerly EMC, the owners of the properties that were mentioned by folks from Bravestar. So I just, so first, I'll ask the question, can I get on the same distribution for the criteria scorches with the rules that you're talking about? I didn't remember any notification about the public review periods. I don't know if those were sent to businesses, and if not, I'm not quite sure why, but I guess in the context of why those parcels were not considered for the overlay district, I'm hoping I can get a little bit more insight. It sounds like it all.
They were considered.
Were considered, but omitted, and I'm just trying to understand with all of the considerations discussion tonight, what was the mainstay reason they were omitted? Was it because of open space and conservation area? Can I, can I better understand that? Because listening along, the infrastructure in place, et cetera, the thruway, the roadways, the infrastructure access to Route 9 seemed to be very supportive over, versus some of the things discussed tonight, and I just wanted to understand a bit more clearly why they were omitted from consideration. I hate to think it was in the context of what people see, the optics of what they see today, green, treed, very pretty, place to walk the dogs, versus industrial zone property that will, and can and will be developed. So you know what, you know what I mean? In the context of what they voted on, what were they considering was the future or final use of the property? So that's just a comment, and just understanding what people thought would happen.
So I think initially, like, way back in the beginning of this, those parcels were discussed, and there was a lot of pushback from people afraid that they would be developed immediately, and children in schools, and traffic, and all the things of major dense development. So there was that fear initially. And then they were reconsidered, and they didn't rank in the, in the top three, I think, because they were an open space priority and the road and the non-vehicle access to the T. The commuter rail, not the T.
Concerned that they would be developed for fully permitted area that was zoned for 2.1 million square feet. So that's my, that's what I'm saying, is the context, the context is that it would never be developed. It was permitted to be developed.
That is understood.
All right, so if I can get on that, email the situation.
And sort of just, you had asked about why you weren't notified. This is not a public hearing, this is a discussion item. The first public hearing is going to be.
I was talking about the working sessions that occurred in January.
There's no notification requirement.
Okay, fair enough.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Johanna Cage. I live at 6 Parker Street in the Corderville area, and I did have a question about two of the properties that were zoned, which I think were 3 Cottage Street and 272 Corderville. These are kind of cornerstone houses of our community. They were built, they're pre-Civil War era houses. They were built along with the Corderville Wolf Factory, and they are featured on the, if you've seen the little map in the park, they're two of the original buildings featured on there, and I was wondering if you could reconsider zoning those for development.
So we'll have to look at those again, because I thought anything 1925 or older was excluded, so I will, I'll look at those.
Really beautiful old houses.
I have a question. So the compliance model that's being run right now, is that the kind of thing that's going to come out of the vetting, through that process?
The historical houses.
Okay. Okay. So we'll just have to go back and double check that.
What were the two addresses again, if you don't mind?
It was 3 Cottage Street and it looks like 275 Corderville Road. The other ones right north of Cottage Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
There's one on Zoom, I think.
Hello?
There you are.
Yes.
Hi, Eric, if you could introduce yourself and give your address, please?
Of course. Eric Glazer, 9 Skylar Drive. First, I want to thank the board for the consideration around the affordable housing and the potential to increase it beyond the 10%. As someone who was one of the 40B developments under conflict with the principles in the room of the EMC property, if that's a consideration to leverage that mechanism to develop that property to meet the town's goals for affordable housing, that may, I think that would be a great thing to consider. I'm not sure if that's in your, your plans or not, but I appreciated the board's feedback on that point, and thank you further for the hearing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Molly Megan. I live at 8 Fitzgerald Lane, near Corderville area. I just want to make sure that I am understanding this correctly. So these residences here are currently listed on this property area?
Yes.
So if somebody were to want to sell their house, one of these residences, do they have the opportunity to sell to whoever they want to? Or does it have to then go to a developer?
Oh, no, no, no. Whoever you want.
Yeah.
So is there going to be any kind of developer coming after that, though, and offering higher price for a property because of this type of development?
I, there's no way I can answer that question.
Because I know there's communities like Newton that have already completed some of this housing, they've already built some of their housing up because they have already the business infrastructure on the bottom and are building residences above. Easy for them to do that, rather than this dense community.
Meeting on, okay.
They've lived maybe their whole lives. I don't know, some of these people, some of these houses are very old. But to consider how that's going to affect the entire area, if you're going to, like, somebody in the middle of this community here in Corderville could just say, okay, I want to sell my house, and then they're going to put four units up next to, I mean, that's a.
Can you speak up a little bit?
Very dense area? I don't know if this is on.
I just noticed that they can't hear you.
Yeah. So that's my question, I guess, is like.
Pull it closer. Could you pull the mic a little bit?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
So arbitrarily, if they wanted to just sell one of these properties, somebody did, are there going to be builders coming after them and asking them for their properties?
I don't know how to answer that question.
But I do think it's something to consider.
So, so we're required to have 10 acres in that area, and we tried our best to put it in places that would be the least objectionable. Well, so, and have the underlying zoning remain in place, which is huge, because you have to meet all the setbacks and the frontage and everything that is now required in the zoning. All you have on top of that is the ability to build denser, if in fact you can do that. So on some of these, you know, small, small lots, you're not going to be able to, you know, put six units or whatever.
And my other question was about the park, so can somebody petition the town to sell that land to build on that park?
So we're going to work on that. We're going to speak with the select board and hopefully have them transfer that to the care and the control of the Conservation Commission, which puts added protection on it under Article 97, and then you'd have to get the legislature to overturn that protection. So it's a added, you'd have to go through the state. You're welcome. Are we finished on this subject?
Don't have any hands up.
Don't see any more hands raised in the attendees.
Okay. Thank you all. Hope to see you continually throughout this process, and we'll all get through it together. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, downtown district, public hearing to amend the zoning code, Chapter 174, to include the downtown district in use regulations, sign bylaw, outdoor illumination, landscaping, and where that may be appropriate.
Would you like me to read the legal ad?
Please read the legal ad.
This is the public hearing notice to amend the town code to include the downtown district where appropriate. Per Section MGL 48, Section 5, the planning board of the town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing on Monday, January 29th at 7:10 PM in the McCall of Hearing Room. 17 Common Street, Southborough may ask and be assumed to consider amending the town code to add the downtown district in areas of the code where appropriate. These hearings concern the proposed addition of the downtown. These hearings concern the proposed addition of the downtown district throughout the code where appropriate. Changes will include adding downtown district to Section 174-11 signs, Section 174-12.1 outdoor illumination, Section 174-13 landscaping, and anywhere else in the code where Business Village District may be referenced. Copy of the proposal may be viewed on the Planning Board's webpage at www.southrowtown.com/Planning-Board or in person at the Southborough Townhouse during normal business hours. Persons wishing to participate in this meeting can do so in person or via Zoom. Remote participation by going online to www.southrowtown.com/remotemeetings. So this public hearing legal ad was run in the newspaper, the Metro West Daily News, on January 15th and January 22nd to accommodate the public hearing opening with the Planning Board this evening at 7:10. And since it's 8:01, we are well into that time. To give you a little background on the proposed amendment to the town code, generally, as few recall, a couple of years ago, the downtown district was added to the zoning code as a new district with a zoning map update approved at the town meeting. Several sections were updated in the town code to accommodate this. But after the fact, we realized there were a few spots where it wasn't addressed. For example, in the sign regulations, there's a table that describes the criteria of the size of a sign, et cetera, that's allowed in the Business Village District. However, we never added downtown district there. Yeah, that's before the one. For example, in that chart, we'll just simply be adding the word downtown district next to Business Village. If you go back, Colleen, under the Schedule of Use Regulations, where you just were, 174-8C5, you can see here that there's criteria that says any lot created after April 6, 1996, in any zoning district except the BV, Business Village District shall contain a minimum lot of 20,000 square feet. We have to add the downtown district here because I believe the minimum lot is 5,000 square feet. So just a mind, it's more housekeeping. It's all housekeeping. The next section was 174-11D. And here's the table in the sign bylaw where previously, right now, we just have Business Village District. And we failed to put it in in this table here as well. So that when people come and want to install a sign in the downtown district, which overlays a piece of the former Business Village District, the criteria will be the same. So you can see in that chart. Then we have Section 111E1A. And that has to do with. How do we get there? Again, in the sign bylaw, there were sections under special permits for signs, which referred to a standing sign in districts other than residential conservation, research, scientific and professional districts, which exceeds in height 15 feet in the Business Village District. We need to add in downtown district here. Again, same thing under Part B, 20 feet in districts other than Business Village Districts and downtown districts, fronting on Route 9. Now, there's no downtown district fronting on Route 9, so we'll fix the wording there so it it's clear. But basically, it's to show that criteria is for the downtown district as well. And then also here, or exceeds an area of 35 square feet in a Business Village District and downtown district. Again, and then in Part B, same thing for districts other than the Business Village District, fronting on streets other than Route 9 and the downtown district. Go back just a little bit, Colleen, there was a third piece here. So Part D was also a wall sign in districts, 35 square feet in the Business Village District. And in red, the downtown district will be added. And again, under number two, 75 square feet in districts over the Business Village Districts, fronting on streets other than Route 9 and the downtown district. Okay, and next. Was the outdoor illumination section of 174-12, 1E3B. There is language there that identified lighting zone two, moderate ambient lighting. And these lighting zones each have districts associated with them. And we're simply adding downtown district to the LZ2, which was accommodating for the Business Village District. Then there was a associated chart, which our table, which also the same thing. It identified the lighting zones and under LZ2, which had the Business Village District, we're now adding downtown district again to align itself with that downtown district. Then.
Landscaping.
Under landscaping, Section 174-13A3 as follows. Exceptions, the requirements of this section do not apply to developments or renovations in the Business Village District. And we propose to add in downtown district. However, the Planning Board may require landscaping as part of the site plan or special permit application within the Business Village District and downtown district. And again, because the downtown district was overlaid, in a sense, on top of the Business Village District, we wanted to make sure that was, wanted to make sure that was included in there.
Well, I think they have separately landscaping requirements.
In the guidelines. It could be in the guidelines, we'll check that.
That's all the changes.
Yes, as if you recall, the downtown district does have a set of design guidelines. So we'll also confirm that as well. I don't think there was any conflict there, but we'll check, we'll double check.
No, I don't think.
If it's design guidelines, it's.
And then for town meeting, we need to present this, right? We're representing this. It would be good, I think, just to have like a slide or two that just identifies upfront, like where we're adding versus having. I mean, we'll provide all this, but I think just to show that we're just adding in these particular areas.
Just the, just the.
A high level succinct, yeah.
Yeah, just the section.
Just the sections, we don't need, yeah, because.
Yes, so in the warrant article language, if you go to the very beginning of your document here, is this what you're talking about, Marnie? Right here?
Yes.
That. That's what I was reading off as Colleen was scrolling through. Okay. So just a slide like that. So that's basically the proposed zoning amendments to do housekeeping for the downtown district.
Mr. Stein.
This seems like a fairly straightforward codification.
It would seem so.
So this is going to be in the warrant ahead of MBTA communities, is that correct?
I would hope so.
We could, we could ask town administrator to put it in that order.
Yeah, I would highly, I would recommend that. Do we have any other warrant articles other than this and MBTA communities?
Yes, we have.
There's a section.
ZBA is, has requested zoning amendment through the Select Board for an amendment to 174-9 special permits to clarify, to identify and clarify a special permit lapse time. So similar to like what we have for the lid, or a special permit for lid, that bylaw requires that you have, the special permit lasts for two years with one year extension with certain thing, you know, like that. They're going to add that into 174-9 for special permits that aren't specifically outlining a different timeframe. For existent, for example, like adult uses has a different timeframe for a lapse period or the medical marijuana.
Okay, I remember now that. Anything else?
I think those are the.
Those are three, okay. When are we going to have the public hearing on that?
The public hearing is for the ZBA special permit amendment is for the 12th, February 12th. So that just went in the paper last week, so it was advertising today, next week, Monday, and then the following Monday is our February 12th Planning Board public hearing opening for that.
Okay, so in the past, what the department has done is continue to have these public hearings for these warrant articles on each agenda, right, all the way up on every meeting.
Up until the town meeting, right.
Is that necessary?
Well, I think that during the public hearing process, the warrant is going to go to print with whatever draft they have at the time the Select Board signs off in print. If something comes up and, and they want, and you want to have discussion about a potential amendment to that warrant article, then that allows you the opportunity to still discuss that up until the town meeting.
That's fine. I, I just feel like in the context of what we're trying to accomplish with MBTA communities, the time management has to be like very sharp, yeah. So we cannot belabor the, you know, these other things that are going to, to me.
It was house.
Be fairly non-controversial, but yet, you know, try to get.
Just don't know.
We still have to do it and do it correctly.
Right. I would anticipate that these two, that the, that the downtown district and the special permit, the ZBA's lapse period, those should be relatively straightforward. There's, it's, it's like a house cleaning thing because as a matter of fact, ZBA's amendment.
Is required by.
Is required, but it's also in another, 174-25A was another area they were going to add it. But town council opined that it wasn't necessary, that it could just be handled in 174-9. So it already simplified that as like one small section that's being added.
So we might want to figure out who on the planning board is going to present this just because it's not a piece, you know, it's, it's non-controversial, in my opinion, it's codification, it should be no problem. But still has to be presented. And whoever presents it has to do some homework and be ready to do it correctly. So do we want to assign that task now or what's your thought on that?
We can if you're, if you want to do it, if you're asking.
Does anybody else want to do it? Well, it's just, it's not that I'm like super eager to do it, although it sounds maybe like I am, but I'm not. It's just that whoever does it, it's like, you just, whoever does it has to be kind of up to dealing with it. So is anybody dying to do it? Okay, I'll do it.
Jesse, it's also.
Yeah, that's.
And as to keeping it open, I see your point that, you know, it's pretty straightforward, except for you'd hate for something to come up at the last meeting and then we have to three weeks re-notification and then, then I can't go to town meeting. And so I think it's just cleaner to keep it open.
Okay, so I'll be working with. Offline to brace myself for that.
And we anticipate, like Marnie had suggested, there's a slide with this section here and then you'll have your.
Yeah, I'll work with the department to do a PowerPoint presentation and be ready for.
Does that mean we should take you out of the running for MBTA?
Well, I was very excited when Lisa volunteered to be on the 21 Highland Future Use Committee. Put it that way, and I'm grateful for us. Oh, you're going to take me out for presenting MBTA? That's a good point. I mean, I don't know, right now, it's kind of looking.
Oh, they're going to do their own.
But.
And just to be clear, the ZBA will do their presentation for their.
Oh, so we don't need to do, have a present.
They do their own, right? It just has to come through Planning Board as a requirement for public hearing for state.
So we're going to have a discussion item on MBTA communities on the next agenda, right? So at that point, we'll figure out who's going to be the lucky winner for that.
I've already started a PowerPoint.
Yeah, Colleen has started a PowerPoint already to help.
Trying to go back where we started.
MBTA community, so.
Well, we can figure out, maybe that'll be a team effort. We'll have to, yeah, maybe the whole board will. Face the music.
Never hurts.
Any questions on outdoor illumination, anything else on the board? Not outdoor illumination, the updating with downtown district. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? So we need to continue this to the next.
We need a motion to continue the public hearing.
A move to continue public hearing for the downtown district, amend the zoning code, Chapter 174, to include use regulations, sign bylaw, outdoor illumination, landscaping, and where that may be appropriate.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes?
Houlihan, yes?
Maria, yes?
Rashia, yes?
And that's continued to the same time, 7:10, just so you know.
Thank you, yes.
The next item on the agenda, discussion item, minor site plan approval to 64 Corderville Road. Good evening. Will let Karina bring us up to date?
So this is a minor site plan application, so this is not a public hearing. This is a discussion item. However, it does need minor site plan approval from the Planning Board. The last Planning Board meeting was on January 8th. And it was continued to this evening. An extension request was granted by the Planning Board to extend the action deadline to February 2nd. On January 22nd, we received the Fussin O'Neil review of your first submission, plans dated December 15th, 2023, which the review comments were provided to the Planning Board and to the applicant. Let's see here, what else? We received email from the Fire Department and from the Police Department in regards to the second submission that was submitted. So Peter Bemis with Engineering Design Consultants provided submission number two on January 25th, plans dated January 24th, 2024. Submission was provided to the Planning Board, distributed to town departments. And also, and in response to that, we received comments from the Police and Fire Department. One of the questions at the last meeting was if there were concerns with closing the Woodland Road driveway access. So in addition to any comments in general about submission two, they specifically commented on that. And the Police Department thought it was a good idea as a lot of people cut through that, potentially cut through the driveway in order to avoid the stop sign at the intersection of Woodland and Corderville. The Fire Department had no issue as well. They had access to the building from the roadway and it's a flat lot and they could turn the corners at the intersection or it's steep at the southern corner anyway. So they had no problem with access into the site as well. We received comments from the Building Department, Building Commissioner, who revisited the plan because the accessible parking space was moved to the other side, to the south side. And he had no issue with that. I made him aware that the applicant was requesting a waiver for the parking space dimensions for the car sale spaces. And also that the customer parking was now being moved to the southern side and the employee parking, the three or four spaces was on the left. Just note that the ZBA had asked the Planning Board to consider that the employee spaces be kept in the southern corner, just so you're aware of that. Then we also received some information from Peter Bemis about the oil water separator that's proposed on the right side of the building per requirement of the Board of Health. And you, Peter submitted plans to the Board of Health. There's a copy of that in your packet, I think, last page, it's red. So you see that the Board of Health asked that as part of that, let me just get my notes here. as part of that, let me just get my notes here. Asked that the planning board, should they approve the application for the increase in, well, for the minor site plan, that as part of the approval, the oil gas separator be installed prior to occupying and selling automobiles? So something in that manner to ensure that the oil water separator is installed be a condition. See what else we received. Small project, but a lot of input. We received, in case it's necessary, an extension request from Peter Bemis to extend the action deadline to beyond the next meeting, which is February 12th, plus four days is February 16th, in case of any weather or anything. Then just see what else I have here. Building inspector, fire department, police. We did receive a an email on January 8th, just before 10:00 PM, so that was after the last planning board meeting from Laura Angle, who is 198 Woodland Road with comments on the project. That was forwarded to Peter Bemis so he could have a chance to understand and speak to those if necessary. And then brings us to tonight, January 29th, planning board meeting number two.
Great, thank you. Good evening, welcome, Mr. Bemis.
So we we also had Fussin O'Neil comments, so there were three comments. The first pertained to the spaces and the waiver that was necessary. The second pertained mostly to the waivers that we had had regarding the lighting. There were some lighting changes to eliminate any of those items. And then the third was to just address the signage, but we don't need that sign because we're going to block off the entrance. So I don't know if you can put this site plan up on the screen? I can go through the changes. Those are revision date on the plan again to address these changes.
Peter, can you just speak up a little?
Yep, the left view is the existing conditions. Whoops, that's what you see at the site today. The right view is the proposed, along the right view, we are proposing to eliminate the curb cut on Woodland Road. And we clicked to the second screen now, but that's okay, that the trees are proposed along Woodland Road. We did put them at 30 feet on center. And there's some asphalt that's going to be eliminated, obviously at the curb opening. There's a small amount of asphalt that can be eliminated on the south side of the parking on the north side of the building and then on the south side of the building, there's again asphalt. It's eliminated, it goes from about four feet to a few inches. So where we can eliminate it, we are eliminating it. The parking spaces are reconfigured on the south side. I know at one point it was raised that we had three parking spaces shown on our first site plan. That's what the ZBA had referenced, but we still continue to have three spaces on the south side now, one of which is the handicap space. The handicap space that's currently on the north side is the old version of handicap parking spaces, which was 12 feet wide. Now we need to have an eight-foot dedicated access aisle and an eight-foot space. And the geometry just doesn't doesn't really fit well on the north side, fits perfectly well on the south side. And we still get to eliminate some asphalt. That's pretty much the changes, the there's an ad plan for the gas and oil separator standalone plan, which the Board of Health had asked for. And the Board of Health also confirmed that the existing soil, the existing cesspool, if you will, was adequate. We did a water analysis that we provided them with for consumption at the site. And the adding for additional cars for sale is not going to impact that cesspool. The lighting is changed in the upper part of this sheet. The original proposal was for that spotlight. The spotlight is there, it is strictly a security light. It will only come on for motion detection. The lanterns that we had originally proposed have been eliminated and we've substituted that with a barn type light. So there's they're DocSky compliant. There's going to be one on the south side now that our customer parking is going to be there. There and that's over the garage door that's there. There's two above the garage doors on the front along Corderville Road, one above the egress door. And then on the north side, there'll be one light. Again, we've got our employee parking right there clustered in that area. Those lights don't put out a lot of light illumination, they're fairly limited in their area. The residential fixtures, there is not a photometric detail for those cigar lights, but I did provide you with all of the details that are available for them. Very low output light, it's going to have eight watt LED. So it's really not much different than you'd see in a single family home. I did get the opportunity to get some additional data pertaining to the photometrics on the floodlight. And the bug rating on that, they're very low impact, it's a very low impact light in that the was remember, zero to 30 degree and then 30 to 60 degrees where all the light is being eliminated, if you will. So light getting cast above that angle is is very narrow in scope from a forward light, back light and up light perspective. They, there is a program that you try to run at the website, couldn't get it to run, however, for an output. But I did take the isometric plan that they had at their website and overlaid it as best I could based upon the output data. That's this. So if I took the output data that they had and took the distance away from which it would would come for 50% of its light, that's the circle that it has, so it stays well within the lot. And if you take where it's point one foot candles, it still stays within the lot. What I don't understand about it, however, is that it it's showing light going behind the fixture when there's supposed to be zero. So I don't understand it, that's that's in the output that they had at their website. But I can submit that. If if for some reason you're not comfortable with that floodlight, we just won't have one. I I'm really putting it there strictly for security. You know, if there's a call there after hours, there's going to be no illumination in that parking lot for anybody that has to attend the site. So if it's the police coming, they obviously will have a spotlight on the car. But if there's anyone else coming there, they just won't have any light if we don't put it in. So I I'd urge you to allow us to put in this light fixture. It's again a residential type floodlight. It's only there for security and it's going to be set just above the gable on the north side. We won't have it anywhere else. And they are set for downward illumination. So it's only going to light that parking lot when needed. Did give you the extension, I hope we can get this done tonight. We also did put on about the hours of operation. The ZBA decision did say no Sunday operation, that's what it says, no, no business on Sunday when we conduct it. The picket fence is still the fence that we proposed with there. I'm open to other fence details, but I got to tell you that there's it's already snowed a few times there and I see where the snow ends up when they're plowing. So we need to have something that's going to allow the snow to go through that. So I I'm concerned to put up any kind of board fence. I know some of the neighbors suggested a board fence, it's just that the right of way is very narrow there. Our building is just over two feet away from the edge of the layout, so there's not a lot of room to do much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
Back to snow. Where does it go?
So we have some snow storage areas on the north side of that parking lot. Other than that, you have to take it offsite. There's many sites like that in town, but there is some snow storage on the north side. It is very limited. Especially with a car parking lot like, I mean, a car sales parking lot like this, you have to keep it pretty much clear and open. So management would be that they would haul offsite when needed.
Got it. So can you go back to your, you know, Lumen plan there?
This, you have this.
Well, actually, maybe if you can hold it up, I don't know if there's a way for us to. This was, this is not a part of the submission yet, is it?
A PDF from you and leave me a hard copy or send, give me a hard copy and the spec too at the end of the meeting. Yes, I know.
Okay, it sounds like Ms. Houlihan is going to go through this. I do recommend. It's a little bit hard for us to vote on this, in my opinion, based on the fact that this is not formally part of the submission yet.
If you recall in my application, I asked for a waiver on this item because it was, I didn't find information. One of your board members did a deeper dive and I appreciated that deeper dive. I went to this website, I actually had found it, but I didn't get deeper into it. But and they do have this program, it's able to run, but when you go through the categories of the light fixtures, you look for the the Nuvo, remember the code numbers 20, 25, 211, something like that. It just doesn't come up. So I wasn't able to run it in the program, but I took the the Luminous.
So the problem is if we grant the waiver, then you can do anything you want.
No, sir, I'm doing that light fix.
I understand that that's, you know, it's a whole different thing if we if if we, instead of doing a waiver, if we hold you accountable to this. I don't, maybe I'm missing something is is if we grant the waiver, can we still have this be part of us, a part of the plan and the decision?
I think that we need to receive that plan as part of the submission along with the the exact specification sheet and the data that you found in the I think it can be worded, the waiver has to be very specifically worded.
Right.
So that it says, this is, you're you're getting waived that because you're going to do specifically this.
Right, but that is the light that I I specified and that's what you have the specification on. It's just that there was a little bit more public information for the fixture. Still not to the level that we're customary to have for a commercial fixture, but it it's.
I think what Jesse said, and you can correct me, but the waivers are very general.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't.
And we just want it to be specific.
I don't remember off the top of my head when we've granted a waiver that actually had something enforceable as a contingency for the waiver. Because, I mean, once something's waived on a site plan, it's.
But you're not waiving the fix, I'm putting that fixture in.
I understand, from your perspective, you're saying, okay, the waiver's contingent on this. I'm saying from the town's perspective, does that work? And I'm not 100% sure.
I would hope it would be.
And what I can offer is in like in the decisions for major site plan and we identify the waivers requested and then there's a explanation of what the waiver is for. So it's very clear and that it's granted based on that.
Right, so like, let's say Mr. Bemis sold this to a business who then put in a a giant, you know, one of those lights that shines up in the air.
Right.
And that proponent, you know, there was some complaint to the building department. The building inspector could then pull out our decision, point to the waiver and say, I'm sorry, you're going to have to remove that spotlight because the waiver was contingent on the specific piece of equipment that was agreed on in 2024 and it's now 2054.
I think there's two things. We have to specifically reference that drawing, that sketch, which should be stamped.
And that's what you have, that's what I'm saying.
This one here, the Lumen one, someone has to be accountable for that drawing, that it's accurate. And then number two, the bylaw, outdoor illumination bylaw also has, I can't cite it specifically, but if in the future a fixture is changed or a number of fixtures are changed, it trigger, they still have to comply with the lighting threshold and this spotlight meets the threshold of that bylaw.
Yeah, who who made this drawing?
We we took that output that's in the eight and a half by 11 sheets that's from their website and we brought it into AutoCAD and put it in based upon the output data that's there. They they have a.
Okay, I mean, I'll I'd be interested to see what the waiver looks like and left to decide at that point. That's it for me, thank you.
Ms. Houlihan.
Yeah, so first and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Bemis because he reached out to collaborate on exactly the illumination, knowing I'm the lighting lady. So we did have a very.
Crestfallen, you weren't here at the last meeting.
We had a very good conversation. I think the the first part was the the gall lantern lighting, the barn lighting completely. So I think it's really important on two notes is that this is, these are residential fixtures. So I think they, from my perspective, they meet all the requirements that we had intended. It is. And it's not a commercial, that spotlight. And then today, or maybe over the weekend, there is detailed information on the bug rating for that Nuvo, which I think you've included. And it meets all of the requirements on the hardscape requirements for our outdoor illumination. And while it's difficult to see, I'm actually hard pressed to even believe that that is the radius of the light cast based on what we know from the specs on the bug lighting. So I I think even your drawing makes it larger than it should. I think it's much more of a narrow spotlight and it meets our requirements because it can't, it can only go to 50 degrees, it can't go all the way up to 90 and it's shielded. So from my perspective, I was completely on board with everything he submitted for the lighting.
So, but just out of curiosity, in the context of my question regarding how that that waiver is going to be worded, how do you envision that?
So the question is, is it actually required? Because you've met the obligations that we seek in an outdoor illumination, do you still need the waiver?
I'm below your threshold, what what I was concerned about is I can't provide you all the criteria that you asked for in your regulation. So that's why I asked for the waiver. Am I, I'm still going to need it because of the barn light, I don't have.
I I have a.
For that either.
I have a feeling we'll probably find that too, Peter, Peter.
I tried.
I think that the spotlight does trigger the threshold because of the lumens in the spec. That's why you were asking.
900 lumens, that's right, you 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 on spotlight, you limit the up up high number.
The lumens threshold for applicability for the spotlight is 900.
Oh, there we do, okay.
That one light and it was similar.
So I guess the question would be come back to Jesse to say if we if we give a waiver specific to the spotlight, can we be very clear that the spotlight that is approved and it exceeds the 900 Lumen capacity, but it is approved based on the Nuvo 65 dash 2011 incorporated into the plan?
65 to 11, right. And I also looked at that program and saw it online, so.
I'm trying to keep it very narrow on the lighting and again, if you deemed it not not a good idea, we just won't put the spotlight in. I I just don't want to miss this opportunity to get it because I think it should be there for security.
I definitely would agree, I think, because the barn light isn't enough. If you have someone at night going in, I think it's it's a motion sensor. It meets that kind of requirement.
We're sure the lighting's not going to go offsite, you have the ability to come out and start of your review to check it. If you had issues with it, someone was complaining about it, there's a mechanism in your bylaw for this. So I I have no problem with those same conditions being applied. Just feel like sometimes it's a square peg in a round hole. And this is one of those instances where it just was very difficult to try to find a way to get to get it set properly.
Yeah, so that was my only comment and I'm supportive of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Maria.
Hi, Peter, thank you. I'm supportive also.
Hi, Peter, thank you. I'm supportive also, Peter. I just, I'm curious. I think that you've done a good job in trying to address a lot of the concerns and you know that we've received some comments from from neighbors. Has anybody approached you directly with any other additional concerns or have you spoken to any of the neighbors?
I did meet the two that came to the meeting out in the hall afterwards. I'm not here tonight, so I thought I did a pretty good job maybe of addressing their concerns with this plan. You know, they live there. I get it. And I drive by it every day as Karina drives by it every day. So, you know, I I'm trying to put the best spin on on the site. Clearly, that building wouldn't be there today if it wasn't there before zoning. So that's why it's there and we're trying to make it fit as well as, as good as possible. I think we've done that. The neighbors, you know, not reach me. I did, you know, did indicate that if they had a concern to reach out direct.
Right.
There will be a, I know a new tenant in the building at some point, so there's a lot of interest to be there.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
Ms. Barshu.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter, for coming. Just a couple of quick questions. One, I know at our last meeting, I was concerned about the south side and the visibility from Woodland Road. So I noticed the plan has landscaping on that corner there. What are you proposing? And unless, I might have missed this in the submission somewhere, but I'm just curious if you can just touch on what the landscaping is gonna be. I mean, if it's gonna be a shrub that's gonna grow.
Yeah, no, it's all ground covers. So so the the last tree is is that, is right at the end of the parking space. So then everything beyond that is just low lying material. So nothing would screen. And that's why we also put the customer parking there. That's gonna be transient.
Right.
They're not gonna be there all day. It's gonna be open for the most part.
Yep.
So that was another reason to really take it in this direction.
Okay, and actually, Jesse, this is kind of going back to you. I thought you had a question at the last meeting on the sign, that's the base that's there.
Mr. Bemis said that the sign's gonna be removed from the plan.
Yeah, it's, well, the base is still there. But but as far as that sign's concerned, I'm not asking for any, any sort of approval or anything to do with it. I said the base is there. It's it's there in the site plan. So I'm not, I'm not changing it. I'm not doing anything different with it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that.
No sign there today.
I just wanted to make sure that that was covered because I know Jesse had mentioned it. Thank you.
Closing the Woodland Road entrance is huge and thank you for that. I think that will be very helpful to the neighbors. But a lot of the landscaping requirements haven't been met. And my concern is that, so there was a site plan approval in twenty fifteen that had landscaping on it and required that that landscaping be installed by a date certain in twenty fifteen and it never was.
Some was. I know they didn't do some of the things we had suggested, though. I agree with you.
And then the plan that was submitted to the zoning board had landscaping, had not good landscaping, but it had planting and fountain grass and daylilies. But this doesn't have, other than the trees, it has nothing.
Well, we're putting the fence along Woodland Road now, so it is gonna be grass growing with it. I don't think there's really a shrub that I can put in to complement that any longer. It's just a different approach. So we went with the street trees. And they're gonna be right up against the fence.
So that's another thing. So the the zoning board asked that the planning board give special consideration to fencing and screening along Woodland Road. That's a three-foot fence that doesn't screen anything. And that was one of the comments from one of the abutters that the fencing was supposed to.
I just don't see how we can have it both ways. That if we, if we try to put some shrubs in there, there's got to be a shrub that's gonna grow in a fairly compact manner because there's not a lot of space. And then it would, if we do it in addition to the fence as well, then it's in competition with that space. So the the thought was is to put the picket fence in and the trees, which would look like a formal streetscape. There's not, shrubs don't necessarily grow along the shoulder of the edge of a road. That's what's here, is a shoulder at the edge of a road.
So, but you had like fountain grass and daylilies that were proposed there.
But no offense, I just don't see how they're gonna be in competition with each other. I had hamling grass and daylilies. Yes, I don't disagree.
So I, so there's, so you're short on the number of street trees.
I don't think we are. We have, we have, it's under two point, two point nine, I think, per space.
Well, for street trees, which is one tree per forty feet.
But it did thirty.
Yeah, but only on one road.
But the other road doesn't, so that, so the other problem with the other road is the right of way of Cordible Road is so wide. We, our, our building is already that minimum setback for our access. So we don't, we don't have the ability to do anything there. Now, when the town does something on Cordible Road, they may be able to do something and then maybe we can do something on our side with a little bit of space that's there. But if the town doesn't opt to do anything along Cordible Road, we can't do anything on our site. There's no way to maneuver through the site on our site.
Okay, so then you you need a.
So that was the point I made at the last meeting, is that there were pre-existing non-conforming buildings. There's a lot of things that don't comply here. Building doesn't comply. The coverage doesn't comply. There's a lot of things that don't comply. We're making them better.
But so you need to, you need to request a waiver for the things that don't.
Changing it. Why, why, why would I request a waiver for something? Like, it would be asking for waivers for like lots, a litany of things. Because I waived the use. The use isn't allowed. I, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm waiving like all sorts of things. It doesn't make sense. I need to waive the things that I'm changing, I think is the important thing. And that's what we've asked for. I'm not changing anything along Cordible Road, so I don't see why I would ask for a waiver. Because it's pre-existing, non-conforming. The building inspector didn't, didn't suggest that we do so either. And he's the zoning enforcement officer. So I'm just saying is that I feel like you're, I'm not, I'm not trying to disagree with you. I'm just saying it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to have asked for those things. I asked you for waivers, the things that I thought I had to ask. And it didn't come, it definitely didn't come up in twenty fifteen when we went through the site plan then either. Because it just, because again, I don't think we were changing any of those things. I can't change. Because you feel like I have to put a blanket waiver in.
Oh, no, not a blanket waiver. Never a blanket waiver.
Because what you're saying, cite all of the sections for landscaping, I mean, coverage, I'm just saying, where do we start and stop? The site's non-compliant. We identified that on the plan as well. I took the time to write that on there. So you folks weren't setting new ground. I mean, this ground's already been established.
So, so, I mean, this is a difficult lot. It's a non-conforming, it's right in the middle, all surrounded by residences. There've been numerous complaints. So we need to try and make it the best it can be. And I don't think a three-foot fence does anything that the ZBA was discussing when they they issued the special permit.
I participated in that process and I, I wasn't hearing something from them that's different than that.
Well, give special consideration to fencing and screening along Woodland Road. So the fence doesn't do any screening. It's three feet tall and the pickets are far apart. And there's no screening proposed.
No, the, those pickets are fairly tight. There's space there for, honestly, for the snow to go through, in my opinion.
With this, Peter, is the screening for headlights or lights from cars pulling through? What was the screening from?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if they, if that was ever really identified. It was really to establish a streetscape along Woodland Road, which we do with this. If you go, if you just take one house back from us, I mean, a lot of these homes don't even have trees in front of them. So there's, there's a lot of open space there. So the trees, the homes on the east side of of Woodland Road is setback much further from the street. But the ones that are right next to us, they are also right, right up close to the street. I just think the street trees are gonna do a good job at creating a streetscape and the fence is gonna separate us, separate our site from Woodland Road.
Why not add more street trees on Woodland?
They're already thirty on center. These crowns are gonna touch in the future. Those are thirty on center. So so think about that tree as it grows. It's gonna, those canopies are gonna touch. I can't, I can't.
And and that's the.
Put them closer.
That's the best we can do on the fencing?
I don't see it being a bad fence. What, what, what are you urging me to do? A four-foot picket fence? I just feel like it's gonna be very close to the road. It's gonna, it's gonna feel a little awkward. I was gonna originally propose a split rail fence.
What's that?
To split, two split rails or three split rails. Peral fence, right. I, I'm just concerned. Look, this is the building.
The abutter is asking for screening from headlights and from to. Oh, that's good. And and just blocking the operations of what's going on there. I think some shrubs would be.
And I also feel like the business hours sort of mitigate that. The business hour is now, what's the? Here, what was it?
Monday through Friday.
Nine to six.
Six and Saturday ten to four, Sunday's closed.
I feel like those hours and the closure of the Woodland Road portion do mitigate the headlight.
Oh, yeah.
To some extent.
Peter, they'll be fixing that little break in the fence there.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I thought that had been repaired. I don't know when it was.
I just, so you were granted a special permit to for pre, to expand a pre-existing, non-conforming use. And the planning board was asked to give special consideration to fencing and screening along Woodland. The removal of the concrete island, I think you already did that. This restriction of three spaces toward the southern corner for employee parking only. I think they were trying to make sure that the employee didn't.
No, we, we, it had nothing to do with that at all because I was in, participated in that process. We were, we were talking about designating parking spaces for different uses. And and more, most important was the twelve for sale. And and so what I'm, the reason why I shifted the parking was because customer parking is gonna be transient in nature. So therefore, it's gonna be open most of the time. People aren't coming in to buy a car, you know, twenty-four, seven in this day. So the south side is where the site distance is limited. By moving the employee parking that'll be there all day long, away from that area will improve site distance. In the handicap parking space, it's required and it's required to be that size. I, I thought it was better to have it where it was, but but we can't make the geometry work. So in case, you know, he, he has to, we have to do it that way. There's no waving on that. ADA compliance is ADA compliance has to be ban, ban necessary. I, I really think the picket fence is gonna be effective. If you think about it from a stone, if it was a stone wall, you probably would only be going up thirty inches with that. A masonry wall and that would screen anything either effectively. The fence is in keeping with that. It's going to be very close to the edge of the road. I just don't think putting up a higher fence makes a lot of sense. I have seen it done. You know, I've seen people put panel fences up close to streets. They're not very nice. You tell me.
It was a concern in that email. The three-foot fence doesn't meet any of the criteria that would, we would find acceptable as abutters. Conversations during the multiple ZBA meetings discussed opaque fencing similar to the vinyl fencing on the other areas of the property along Woodland. Continuing to the edge of the building site, members of the ZBA also thought that a fence of this size would make it very clear to customer car haulers, there's no access from, oh, so this is still the Woodland Road thing. Okay. So no shrubs. And how would there be a clear demarcation between the for-sale transition parking and the employee parking?
We identified it on the site plan and then they have to put placards in the cars. It was all outlined in the ZBA decision.
Did you add that customer parking sign too, to this plan? You added a sign here on the southern end of this customer parking in the southern corner, right here.
And that was the other reason. The employees are now co-mingled with the, if you will, in the few spaces that are there next to the cars for sale. So rather than having customers go in there, it's just a better detail.
All right. I'd like to see more of an attempt to comply with the landscaping, but just one voice.
I think we brought the site a long way. We've, we've tried.
So for the record in preparing a decision for the minor site plan, I had a couple of things I wanted to pass by to make sure you wanted me to include them. A, that the Board of Health confirms that the septic system is adequate for the proposal. Just to carry it in there to make sure. And then also the oil and water separator needs to be installed prior to. Well, they have an occupancy permit. It's not like they have to get a new occupancy permit.
Right, so so that was the other thing is timing. You know, obviously, they have a building that they'd like to occupy again, but we, we have to fulfill some of these obligations in the plan. And some things are not gonna be easily done in the winter. You know, there is frost in the ground now, but you know, if it gets worse, then that would be difficult to put the fence in. So I would like to have at least the decision recognized in planting trees. I don't think we could plant trees right now either. So I would like to have some time built into the decision, but not, doesn't have to be extensive. You know, just give us till.
Like, like the twenty fifteen decision?
Well, I, I, again, we drew a plan. The owner was less involved then. The tenant was more involved then and didn't do the work, so I'm sorry. He didn't do a lot of things. But he's not here to defend himself, so.
I think, yeah.
If you give us a little bit of time that's reasonable, that would, that would make sense, you know. So give us till at least May, you know, sometime during a construction season, where we could get it all done. I mean, the building doesn't have a gas and oil separator now and that's why Dennis and I spoke about that and warranted. Vehicles do go in the building. We do need to make it compliant, so we are doing that. But that's gonna be challenging to get done.
So the, to be clear, the, the lighting, except for the motion sensor, is only on during business hours?
Absolutely. Yes, I think we had said a half an hour from closing.
Okay.
Yep. Just so it's a good, you know, transition for employees to get out.
And delivery hours are only during business hours?
Correct.
Sorry, Karina, go ahead.
No, no, that's okay. So the oil-water separator ties into the existing sewage disposals.
No, no, it's a tight tank.
It's a tight tank, so that's going to have to be pumped on a regular basis. And that's Board of Health jurisdiction.
There's an alarm system for it.
Okay, and I didn't receive anything regarding the current system being adequate? Or was that included in his email?
That was in his email.
Oh, it does. He does. It's the first paragraph. I'm sorry. Excuse me. Okay, so we don't need that. As far as the lighting, if there was concern, I can always add the standard lighting that. That. As far as the lighting, if there was concern, I can always add that standard lighting that the planning board has one year To review and to see if it's too much, too little type of thing. So the lighting.
We do our own photometric.
Yeah, yeah.
In this case, since it's not occupied, I put after occupancy, in case it's not. I don't imagine that happening, but if it's not occupied for a year.
One year, one year, one year from occupancy?
Yeah.
Yeah. One year starting when it becomes occupied.
I agree. That's fine.
As far as the landscaping. Okay. You want to take that person first?
Hi, Laura. If you could introduce yourself and give your address?
Hi, yep, Laura Engel Vaughn, one nine, one ninety-eight Woodland. So I would just add in addition, not to beat a dead horse with the fencing here. But if the true really kind of concern here is the snow, I would argue that a three-foot picket fence, the first time it snows and a town plow comes by, that fence probably won't exist anymore. And as far as the screening from the lighting goes, It is car headlights, but also the delivery pattern, the vehicles are to pull off Into the site from Cordova Road In front of the building. And we're talking about large car haulers here. Oftentimes, they have Flashing lights on the top of the vehicle. Sometimes it's a smaller vehicle. Sometimes it's a, you know, too high Commercial car hauler with like a Mack truck engine on the front. So again, that screening, not only from the lights of vehicles coming in and out, but the lights of those Delivery car haulers and the noise created by them. Really, a three-foot picket fence is going to do nothing for us in regards to that. So I guess it would be hard to say until you live here. Kind of the disturbance that that creates. And I guess that the hours are only until six o'clock, but we're in the winter season right now and they all know it's dark by four. So when there are, you know, yellow flashing lights outside of your living room window. A three-foot picket fence really isn't going to screen anything from that. And then I guess my other question is in regards to occupancy. Is the building currently not occupied? Because for the last several days, there have been Multiple vehicles parked along that White fence and there have been people at that property. So I'm one, I'm kind of wondering what's going on there. I think there are four or five cars parked along that fence right now.
Do you know?
No, I there's the tenant vacated and I'm sure there's people going in and out of the site. Like I said, there's a great deal of interest to be there, so.
Yeah, so it appears that like four to five vehicles have been parked along that fence for the last several days and they're covered in snow, so It certainly has been since before it snowed. There's a van and I think four cars right now parked there. There was a truck inside of the garage bay today, halfway pulled out of it. Plus two other vehicles on site, so I'm not sure. It looks like the for lease sign is down, so I'm just wondering what's going on over there. Because there appears to be quite a bit of activity.
But it it's not like the facility's, you know, closed. The the owner has the right to go in and out of his building, right? I don't know what they're doing. Certainly nothing nefarious. If that's what you're asking as an abutter.
I mean, I'm just wondering why there are cars parked in the for-sale Car spaces if there aren't to be any operations happening at the site right now. Why would cars be parked in the spots Designated for for-sale and in transition vehicles? Because there are, so that's why I'm asking.
But we we haven't fulfilled, you know, we're trying to do the site plan. I I don't think we've really gotten that far for the commitment of all of these aspects of it. That the spaces aren't delineated at this point. I think it's just
Well, there shouldn't
Charlie parked in those spaces.
The spaces have always been delineated that way, even when the last tenant was there. The spaces along the fence were for sale and in transition vehicles. And there are vehicles parked there right now. That's why I'm wondering if those cars are for sale. And they've been there for days.
So as far as we know, there's no one there. There's no tenant occupying that building currently. I don't, the owner may be do- doing something with cars and I don't know how to answer.
I think he has a right to use the site. There's nothing prohibiting him. So we're not, there's nothing going on there that that is not legitimate. They can park a car there. It's a parking.
Anything else, Laura?
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
So Just to get back on my list here, so I understand, you you know, Mimi was asking about landscape waivers. I think just to clarify for future that it was addressed As opposed to, you know, ten years down the line, someone looks and the landscaping is whatever And there's nothing that addresses, well, why don't you have your ten-foot buffer there? This protects you as well, that if you asked for a waiver from the ten-foot buffer, it's written in the decision. So if, you know, if that's the waiver Type you were asking for, the one seventy-four dash thirteen D ten-foot buffer on side and rear. I think you
Can't fulfill it.
You have I just want to be sure that we cover what we need to.
Right.
And then
So maybe a note that it's a pre-existing non-conforming, very Tight Lot, so the
Site plan notes item one, site is pre-existing non-conforming. I went through all of that, so you would have it.
So that now we'll have it in the decision too.
Right, no, but I think it's important for all of us.
So it's those two codes that I will reference. And it's one seventy-three thirteen D about the ten-foot buffer strip along the side. Because I believe you have Buffer in the rear, the fence in this
North side.
But not on the sides. And then one seventy-four thirteen B ten is the plantings for Cordova Side Road. Those two waivers will be listed in the decision. Okay, and then The lighting waiver will be very specific to the referenced sketch And the specification that was provided for that. Okay. And then, of course, the parking waiver that you're requesting for the spaces, for the for-sale spaces that aren't Right, compliance size. So those will be And the lighting is less than, is equal to a less than three thousand degrees Kelvin? I saw that in the spec, okay. Okay, and I don't think that With a minor site plan with the kinds of changes here, is there an as-built requirement? The occupancy isn't tied to that. Because the site's existing and you're not disturbing the paving. It's a matter of Fence will have the approved plan Like we do with many of the other minor site plans, because there are only minor surface changes. You'll have plantings on there, but that'll be reflected in the design. The approved plans that are for design, if the board's in agreement with that. Usually if there's drainage changes, underground disturbance. The Board of Health will probably require an as-built for the oil-water separator. Which is really the only underground disturbance, the underground. So if the boards are right with that, I don't have to include that.
It's almost there's a way that we can make sure it gets done because it wasn't done before.
That's true. And how difficult, it's not difficult as-built to do.
I was going to just say, I I I don't mind. We can give you a review memo. It's when it's completed, because we're going to have a a date certain to have it completed by. I do expect you to do that. So sure, we can give you, it's the itemizing that we've completed the project.
What about a plan? Just update the plan that you have with an as-built. Okay, then I take that back.
Deviate the changes or something.
And a and a certifying letter that it's been compliant, it's built in substantial compliance. Okay. That's all I have.
And just the, do you have the lighting hours and the delivery hours?
Yeah. We've referenced the plan that approved.
Oh, and the hours of operation, I know they're on the plan, but they should be on the decision too.
And then the, you though you said the oil and gas separator per Dennis's request. That is part of the approval, the oil-gas be installed prior to occupying and selling automobiles.
And Peter mentioned that we may have a tenant probably to expedite the installation of that. So I don't know who that was, but the Board of Health is asking that. Oh, I'm sorry. It's the Board of Health that's asking that requirement. See, we were talking about a a May timeframe That you would have to have that installed, but that's really a Board of Health requirement Here, so I think we'll have to clarify that with Board of Health agent. If 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 he says it's okay to wait till May, then we could write it till, you know, By May first, twenty twenty-four, you have it installed. If he says, no, you need it right away, then it'll be prior to the occupancy Of the new tenant. Occupancy, yeah. Whatever he wrote in his
Right, I I didn't, I didn't see that he had written that.
Occupying and selling automobiles. Okay. Check with Board of Health. On the water separator timing. Okay. Anything else? The conditions? So my goal will be to draft this Prior to the next meeting?
You get a continuation? Thank you.
So we need a We have an extension request For minor site plan. To February sixteenth. Thanks.
Okay, anything else on this?
Are you going to have that zoning article at the next meeting? Can you, can you take me first?
Oh. Oh, the MBTA.
I asked for one request.
I was thinking that. I'm sorry, Peter.
No, you haven't done your agenda yet. When you do.
Okay. We'll put you on the top. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Residents at Park Central. I think this is just a, an update, really nothing, nothing new on this. It's on hold until April, I believe. Pending outcome of a court decision. I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add or discuss or Onto the next item on the agenda. April third For Park Central. The next item is a discussion item, one twenty Turnpike Road. Forty B. You want to update us, Karina, or do you want me to?
Okay, you can probably freshen your mind.
Oh.
If you might.
So at the last meeting when we discussed one twenty, we had decided to send a Legal opinion to Town Council and Mr. Murray and I would attend Town Council office hours. Out of that discussion, Town Council was very concerned about An issue that we had raised in our October Letter to Mass Housing and then again in our December Letter to the ZBA, that the previous site plan approval On that site, one of the conditions of approval was that six point two acres would be given to the town's Conservation Commission. And that is The land on which the forty B is proposed. So Town Council believes they would have to come back before the board for a modification of a A modification of the site plan To either waive or amend that condition before they could move forward with the forty B. And then on Friday At the request of the Select Board Chair, Ms. Houlihan and I met with Sam Stivers and the Chair of the Select Board and they were Questioning whether the board would waive that condition and how it would move forward and We made clear that We don't speak for the board and if there's a A proposal, we'll be happy to hear it. And then today I received a email from Town Council requesting a A meeting with me and him and the proponents To discuss this and I Responded to Town Council that that is a discussion of the board And that I don't speak for the board, only the board speaks for the board. And I had offered, I said this was a discussion item tonight if they If the proponents would like to start the discussion tonight, we would Be willing to to have that discussion. And I see that A couple of the attorneys are in the Zoom room, so I don't know if they Want to have any discussion, but Wanted to know if the Board agreed with that assessment, that the only the board speaks for the board and And I think this is too big a deal to have A little One-person powwow, yeah.
Mimi, can I just add, I I think it's important that the board have something in front of them to discuss also because right now it's hypothetical. Right? So I think for every matter, whether you're on ZBA, Planning Board, you have to look at what's in front of you. We don't have anything in front of us, so it's impossible to have the discussion.
Can I add something, Mimi? I appreciate the the conversation we're having here tonight. The Planning Board is a very transparent board. And I I agree with you that having any informal discussions without Members of the board on a topic such as this could Just create issues. Again, we always want to be open and transparent with the public and I think you've chosen the right path in what you've suggested tonight, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm I'm a little confused about the meeting that took place on Friday. So The the two Select Board members Wanted your individual opinions on whether or not This board would entertain a submission to revise the site plan on one twenty. And that, in fact, reversing The conservation commitment? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, you do.
Okay, and what was And this is the unfortunate thing about meetings that don't happen in the public forum. What, do you recall, and you know, feel free to say you don't, obviously. But do you happen to recall what the context was? What were they saying, you know? Why were they asking that and What exactly were they hoping to achieve by having this discussion?
I can't answer why. All I know is that the Select Board All I know is that the Select Board has been very open about their support for this project, so they were disappointed by this news. I think they were trying to gauge whether the Planning Board would entertain either waiving or amending. And I made clear that we entertain anything that comes before us. If you've, you want to amend the site plan, fill out an application and get on the agenda, and we, it will be discussed. What the board will say or what, you know, what will happen, I have no idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just surprised that Mr. Dennington and Mr. Stivers, are they, are they at this meeting by any chance?
Mr. Stivers is.
I, I would love to hear what answer other than that one would expect, or, or possibly could be answered. I can't imagine any other answer than what you just said to that question. It's kind of mystifying. I don't, what else?
Sam, I don't, I don't know if you want to be put on the spot and answer that question, that's up to you. But you have been promoted if you want to speak to that.
Maybe not.
I think that's your answer.
Fair enough.
Mimi, just for the public, this relates to the email that Town Council sent after our meeting several Fridays ago, correct?
I think it was, it was on Wednesday.
Yeah. Oh, Wednesday.
Townhouse hours, the last Townhouse.
Do you want to, I don't think the public understands, though there was an email that Town Council wrote that I referenced earlier, where he said it's a significant issue. And I don't think we've told the public what that significant issue is, I'm not sure the public knows what that is. And I don't know if anybody wants to describe it, that email?
I, I think I did, but I will again.
Okay.
That the previous site plan approval what?
Of 2019.
Of 2019 for a site plan for that property requested a parking garage and.
And site improvements that were courtyard between the two buildings, renovation of a courtyard. So there was a, there was a major site plan application and special permit for LID for, in 2019, that was approved for a parking garage and improvements to the courtyard between the two buildings under one permit. It was titled that, it was addressed in the decision explaining that. And then there were several decisions, and the very last decision.
Condition.
Condition, a condition in the decision was the requirement for the owner to convey the 6.2 acre parcel at the south end, that's now the 40B locus, to the Conservation Commission. I think within approximately like a one-year timeframe, they were required to do it. So during that time, the property sold to Ferris Development, or an entity of his. But in the decision, there's also a condition that says the permit is to the owner and all its successors. Right prior to, you know, a prior condition. And it was Town Council's feedback to us that said exercising, if you exercise the permit, you exercise the permit, it's not, you exercise a little piece and then you only have to do these conditions, so to speak, in layman's terms. So that was the, that was the story. There's a condition that requires conveyance of that now proposed 40B locus, which is an issue that has to be, it was our understanding that it would be mitigated with a modification to the site plan permit and probably the special permit for LID, because those were both issued.
And you confirmed with Town Council it was exercised.
They, they did the courtyard, the work in between the buildings.
Yep.
And it was filed. And it was a condition of approval, they got approval, and these are your conditions.
And the decision was recorded, both of them.
Recorded.
Site plan and the LID.
Which, by the way, is the same, although that's not what we're talking about, but that's the same issue on the other property, this conditions of approval.
Yep, thank you for bringing us up to speed. Appreciate that, and thank you for going into the meeting.
I don't know if anybody.
So we currently have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 people in the attendees, no hands raised.
Okay. Anything else? Onto the next agenda item, Planner's Report.
Okay, the Planner's Report. I have a few housekeeping items, but I see one of the items I have under Planner's Report is an update on the projects. So I just want to get you up to speed on 325 Turnpike and the ASBILT review. So currently, the ASBILTS are have been provided to Fussin O'Neil, and there was a site visit scheduled for today, but it was rescheduled to tomorrow at 11:00. It was still snowing this morning, et cetera. So we're waiting for Fussin O'Neil to complete their review of the updated ASBILTS. If you recall, I had received ASBILTS and they weren't complete. Fussin O'Neil opined that they weren't incomplete. They, the applicant provided updated ASBILTS, which were then complete, which were then provided to Fussin O'Neil. And following, Fussin O'Neil coordinated with Columbia Construction, who's the contractor, scheduled a site visit, which will, is supposed to happen tomorrow at 11:00. Once they do that, then they'll finalize their review and provide us with a review, a peer review letter, which will then describe if the work has been completed and the ASBILTS are match the design. And that's where we are, so.
And I assume you want to add something to that, Mr. Presoning?
Very much so. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you recall, we were here on the 8th. We had a very long discussion about potential of issuing a temporary occupancy permit so that KENS could utilize a third of their building, basically, that has been completed, internal, is built out, all the racks are in place, all the robotics are in place, operated. And the really only work to be done outside was some pavement that we figured would be a little bit better at its turn, so that there's no net new pavement, because we're giving you more green area somewhere else to make up for it. And we were hopeful because KENS had facility built. And the site plan, we know we're not going to get a final until we hear from Fussin O'Neil. We even offered to put up some sort of bond the last time, but we didn't know how much it would have to be, you guys were concerned. The issue was raised about the underground drainage and everything that was built in the parking lot, but that had to be built and approved by Fussin O'Neil before we started the other end of the construction. So that's all been taken care of. We put up the wall, Fussin O'Neil went out to watch and put in the foundations, puddings for all the wall, the wall has since gone up. I, I argued, I guess, or I, I didn't argue, I requested at the last meeting that we put a temporary CO in place, because right now, KENS is shuttling vehicles back and forth from Marlborough throughout the day, different times of the day, to get product over there that they run out of, that could be inside the building and only have to do it occasionally throughout the week to infill at the building. And I, I think it's just unnecessary for them to be not able to utilize their, their property and their project. I'm going to point out again that it's not only the incumbent upon this board to make sure projects are designed and built right, but to also protect the interests of taxpayers and the community, that was raised. They're a very large taxpayer in this community. They've invested millions of dollars over there, and all they want to do is to be able to use it. Now, I want to go back to the history of the submittal. The submittal came in on the 3rd of the ASBILTS, only because we got here a little bit too late before the holiday, and they couldn't get put in, so we were put in on the 3rd. We had a meeting on the 8th. They had not even been sent to Fussin O'Neil yet. Okay? At that meeting, you guys said, well, let's get it to Fussin O'Neil, let's get them to look at them, and let's see if we can get this thing done. And in fact, Madam Chair, at that last meeting, at 3 hours and 2 minutes, you said, we'll see you on the 19th, come on back in, then we'll discuss the 29th. So I came up this morning, but not only did we get the submittal in before the meeting on the 8th, Karina had it, and she held on with it for a few days. After that meeting, she did get it to Fussin O'Neil. We got comments back from Fussin O'Neil and from Karina on 19 and 112. We addressed all of those comments, which are in here in the letter that Crowe sent, which between the two of them, there were five, five notes that they wanted addressed. And every one of Fussin O'Neil's four were included in Karina's five. So there was only five, there were only five items that needed to be addressed, and they're mostly clerical. They had to do with putting appropriate documentation on the plan and that type of thing. All of that was completed and submitted with electronic copies and hard copies on the 18th. Now, this is 29th, that's 11 days since then. We told Karina at that time that we would be ready and willing and able at any time for Fussin O'Neil to come out, walk the site, and in fact, we're at their beck and call. Site Supervisor that following Monday even sent an email to Karina saying, this is my cell number, have Fussin O'Neil reach out to us directly so we can get this done. Fussin O'Neil reached out at the end of last week, it was either Thursday night or Friday, saying, well, we can come out on Monday. Okay? I don't know why it took them from the 18th to then to be able to schedule a meeting, okay? They had already looked at the plans, they had already commented on them, we addressed those comments and got them to them. All they had to look at was to make sure the comments were done correctly. Then, this morning, at 12:05, Ken's got a call from Fussin O'Neil. We can't make it today. It'll have to be tomorrow. So KENS is going to have their people out there again tomorrow. But this is, there's something wrong with the system. There's something wrong with the way it works.
So.
Fussin O'Neil evidently didn't take this seriously enough. At your last meeting, you said, let's get this done, let's get it done.
The Chair has a question.
So why didn't you submit complete ASBILTS? And when Town Planner, excuse me.
Go ahead.
When Town Planner notified you on the 9th that your ASBILTS weren't complete, you insisted that they go to Fussin O'Neil. So that took till the end of the week, till we heard back from the 9th to the 12th, and then you didn't submit complete ASBILTS until the 18th.
We went through all their comments to make sure everything was done properly. And number one, you guys at the meeting on the 8th said, yeah, let's get this to Fussin O'Neil as soon as we can. So we called her up the next day to get them to them, and she did submit them, and that's why.
But they were in, they were incomplete, they responded in a couple of days, they were incomplete.
With just a few technical errors that needed to be changed, the notes that.
And disclaimers that this has never been verified, like how is that an ASBILT?
What hasn't been verified?
There were notes, I, I don't have the plans in front of me, but there were notes all throughout the plans. This hasn't been verified, this hasn't been verified.
I didn't see that in Fussin O'Neil's notes, their comments.
Yes. As a matter of fact, they did include that in their review of the submittal. So if an application or a submittal is incomplete, we try to get you to complete, yeah. So Scott Doty, in fact, even reached out to me and said, let's have a conversation so I can, we can be on the same page of what you need to have fixed.
Right.
So I can get you updated ASBILT submittal, so that it's a complete submittal, so that you can get them to Fussin O'Neil, because Fussin O'Neil will not review half plans and then spend the money and then have to come back and ask for more to review something twice. So the first review letter was a review of the submittal completeness. It's like a pre, it's like an application completeness review. Then it went to Fussin O'Neil, and one of the biggest things, and an ASBILT is supposed to be as required by the condition, and an ASBILT is for the entire site, as required, because it got kicked down, the, the cam got kicked down the street several times from the prior permits. So the permit was now written so that it covered the whole site. On the front page of the plans, the whole side had a whole list of comments that said the stuff, the information had not been verified. When I spoke to Scott Doty about that, he said, oh, I, I see that, I see that, I can't believe that's on there, that shouldn't be on there, that's not correct. We will update the plans to show, and he corrected those notes. And there were other things too. So it's not really fair of you to say that we're not acting properly, because we are trying to help you, but you have to help yourself by providing complete information that's accurate.
And.
And if the plans say that it's not verified, what is an ASBILT if the, if it doesn't say you're verifying what was built? It's a, it's a conflict of what the purpose of the plans are. So they're currently trying to work on it, you know, and as soon as we get the information back, I'm going to forward it to you. I think the goal of having a meeting, when the Planning Board said, we'll meet at the next meeting, it's put there so that if everything happens fast enough, then you're ready and you'd be on the agenda. But when not, when we knew that it wasn't, there was no new information because of the delay in the updated complete submission, there was no new information till we have information from Fussin O'Neil. They're charged with determining if you are in fact compliant with the approved plans and the decision.
Yeah.
And until we get that back, we don't know if you are or not, because I haven't, I don't do the inspections. As a matter of fact, I think the last meeting, when I explained to you that the last Fussin O'Neil meeting was July 27th, you said to me that that was not true, or you, you, you insinuated that. And in fact, they were not out there, the last time was July 27th, not a month before. Right?
I was, I found out afterwards that.
Right.
Yes, they came out and they looked at the puddings for the wall at that time.
Correct, correct.
To make sure they were.
Then there was no other further correspondence from Columbia to have further inspections at that point of, the wall finished or anything. We can't go by every day and guess that your project is at a certain phase. You have to let us know, because you're not the only applicant. We have a whole slew of applicants.
I understand that. But you've got a client here that has spent thousands and millions of dollars to get us here. They've been upfront, issuing a temporary with a bond associated with it, for the limited work that has to be done. It's only a temporary, we still, if they find more, we're going to have to come back and fix that.
We don't, we have no idea what that is.
It's, it's the asphalt that has to be done, that's about it. That's the work that has to be done.
But they, but you're saying that.
They've already looked at the drainage under the ground, they already have been out to the site several times, even in July. Not that much of the site has changed, other than the wall has gone up. Building was being constructed at the other end, but that was off, that wasn't in the transportation component. We want to be able to use the building. I think you should be able to, and I would request that you would, issue a temporary, subject to final report from Fussin O'Neil, we'll, we'll agree to put up.
But this isn't even on our agenda tonight. This is the Planner's Report.
When we were here the last time, I'm sorry, I, I even went back and looked at it tonight. The Chair at 3 minutes, 3 hours and 2 minutes said, hey, we'll see you on the 29th.
That, well, silly me, I thought you submitted complete ASBILTS.
Well, we did, well, how many ASBILTS come in that are perfect the first time? Not many. Usually come in, and there's a series that you have to go back and correct. A few of these nitpicks and these other things to make sure the verbiage is correct, and all of that is correct. It's, it's whether the building is functional. The building inspector's looked at it, and he said, yeah, internally, everything, everything's fine. I'm okay with this, the only thing is, I need a Planning Board to sign off, like, tell me I can issue a temporary. And that's all I'm looking for.
I don't think he looks at the expanded drainage that was part of the underground system for the building expansion. If the building commissioner does his inspection, it's for the building and for building code. The site inspection is done by a town's consultant, as we always do, that we send a town, we do on projects of this caliber and major site plans. So nobody from the consulting firm has, you know, reviewed the ASBILt up until tomorrow. They may have already started looking at the plans now, but in preparation for the site inspection. But the process is they go look at the site. They walk the site. They check off, everything's complete. And then they provide us with, yes, this is compliant. Or A, B, C is missing. And then-
I, I know how it works. And I think both Scott Doty and Sam Dettori should be on screen. If you could let them come on.
Well, so-
They would have feedback.
So this is just a planner's report. So out of courtesy to you, I let you speak, but you're not on the agenda.
So, okay, so I wasted my time coming here to talk to you about this when I thought at the last meeting, even Ms. Stein said it, and I believe Ms. Fraschio also said, it would be a different story on the twenty ninth looking at this.
Because we assumed you were going to submit complete ASBILs.
And we did on the eighteenth, eleven days ago.
Which still need to go to town consultant for review. That's, it's, you, you can't magically say what-
Well, if the first submission had been correct, we would be in a diff, that was, when I said, I'm speaking for myself now, when I said, see you on the twenty ninth, I was assuming that the first submission was going to be correct. And Fussin O'Neil would have the time to do their diligence on it. So for you to come in here during the planner's report and essentially accuse us of not-
I'm not accusing you.
Acting correctly or, or procedurally, you know, to your satisfaction, really does not sit well with me, Mr. Pazzoni.
It's to the taxpayers in this community's satisfaction.
Yeah. We also represent the town in terms of upholding planning board standards.
That's right.
So it's a balance. We're not out to do anything to undermine revenue to the town. We're not out to do anything to undermine our process, procedure and the code. So this is the position we're in. I can tell you right now, I'm not, I'm not ready to give you what you're looking for tonight, personally.
Okay.
I don't speak for the rest of the board, though. I'm one member.
No, I, I know that. And I, I think that's contrary to what I heard the last time. No, I, I am. I am. And you, and you are too. And, and I'm, I'm not having a problem with that. But again, to your point, you have a duty to the town and the taxpayers, okay? Well, this, this building, you know, there won't be tax revenue on it this year for that section of the building, which is too bad because if they had been functioning, you know, and there had been even a temporary, then they would have to make payments of the taxes. Now it's an incomplete building. That's why I'm saying that you need a consultant that's going to follow through on the things that you guys request them to do.
So there's a consultant that's like sitting there with their car engine going, waiting for us to call and they go running right out there immediately? They do other towns, you know?
They need to be staffed enough to, in order to address all your issues and anybody else in the community's issues that are there being paid to handle.
So it took you nine days to submit a complete ASBILt after you were notified they were incomplete? And you're complaining about Fussin O'Neil?
I'm complaining that they had looked at them the first time. They had to just look at them a second time and schedule a meeting to get out there. They could have scheduled it for last Friday. They could have been out there this morning and maybe given you a report.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so are we going to be on your agenda for the twelfth? Because I won't be in the state, so I'll be zooming in. And I just-
We'll, we'll miss you.
I'm sure you will.
Um, yeah. We should hear back from Fussin O'Neil by then.
We can hear back from them tomorrow and they tell you, oh, we only need a bond of five or ten thousand dollars. Why can't we come in and post that bond and get a temporary occupancy?
Because it has to be acceptable to the planning board.
And have they ever given you a proposed bond that wasn't acceptable to you guys?
I can't answer that question.
A lot of this work that has to be done on the pavement is probably no more than five or ten. So, I mean, have, have they ever given you lowball the developer? Probably not. I hope not, for bounds sake.
We, they're going to do the inspection tomorrow. And Melanie Fletcher with Columbia is going to be out there. Maybe Sam will be there, too. I've invited, I let Melissa Danza Conservation and also Freddie Gillespie know because she's been working with the contractors for the landscaping to help them get through it. But right now, I think it's Fussin O'Neil with Melanie. So as soon as they get that done, Fussin O'Neil will respond with a peer review. I will get that as soon as it comes in. I'll forward it to you and your team so that you can respond to that.
Okay, I would like to have my client on your agenda for the twelfth, if we could. Even if it's come back and sit and talk to you about a report. But so we're listed on the discussion session and we don't get pushed to the next meeting or the next meeting after that.
And just for the record, Bill, I did let you know that you were not on the agenda today. And why? Because we were waiting for Fussin O'Neil review.
And I was, I was already up here.
But, but, but you said you were coming anyway. And I said, well, it's not really necessary. We don't have any new information till we get the peer review.
No, I was up here already. I came up. I left early this morning.
Yeah.
Because I thought I had this meeting. But that's, that's fine. All right, there's nothing we can do, I guess.
I'll get that to you as soon as it comes in.
It's just a shame that this is how things go down.
I'm sorry, something more important here. So I provided everyone with an update from Chris Leroy about the National Grid Vegetation Management Plan for 2023 has been completed. And they'll soon be submitting for a 2024 Vegetation Management Plan. So just a heads up on that.
I, I'd just like to say that our communication from Chris has been fabulous.
Yeah, it's very good and precise and clear. It's a really good thing. It's helping everything. Oh, yes. And aside to that, the DPW director is trying to work on a, a process to get a tree inventory in place. And touch base with us because he wants to work with the planning board and the DPW together, collaborate to come up with something, a plan for that. So that's good news. I think so. I'll talk to him more in length. It was kind of like a part of a, just a catch up discussion when he came by the other day. So that's good news. We have, the annual report was submitted to Melanie Atsuko to put into the, um, the annual report for the planning board. Yep, we did. It was a good, it was good. The planning board, so we're working on an on-call consulting RFP. And the RFP is drafted and we, we have to just pick some timeframes. So Melissa Danza, Lara Davis and I will be meeting on Wednesday morning to just fine tune those timeframes and come up with a selection committee. So we figure I would be on it, Melissa Danza, Lara, maybe David Williams, I'm not sure. And either Mark Purple or Melanie asked, requested to be on it. And I thought maybe a planning board member should be on it, too. So if any of you are interested in taking that spot to, you know, just when we shortlist and interview, just reviewing the proposals when they come in and we'll shortlist them and then, you know, make a recommendation for who it should be. That's, that's a while out. It's probably like a month or more out once it gets put up to bid. So food for thought for the next meeting. Yeah. I don't think, knock on wood, I don't think it'll be a heavy lift. I mean, there'll probably be a lot of respondents. But, you know, maybe Bill Khandif can be on, maybe reach out to him and he can be on it, too, as a PE. He knows a lot of the firms and their capabilities and the comfort level and what they produce and all that. So just food for thought. Let's see here. There is a advisory and select board meeting possibly scheduled for February thirteenth to do the budget discussions. But I haven't been notified of anything specifically for us. Brian Ballantyne, the treasurer, said it would be good to have somebody attend. But we're not there yet and they're going to give more information. That's just a heads up. There's a CPTC Annual Conference, Saturday, March sixteenth at Holy Cross. They usually have a good day there with a lot of information. If any of the members are interested in going, we do have budget for workshops.
Citizens Planner Training Collaborative at that?
Yes. Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. Every year, they do a one-day conference at Holy Cross where they have speakers come in. They give a series of how to do zoning by law, those are open meeting laws.
Tons and tons of classes running at the same time.
Yeah, it's very good. Vanessa Hale had sent out an email about the One Stop Grant Head Open with information that I forwarded to you. The Opera Funds, I let the accountant Carla McAuliffe know that we still intend to use the Opera Funds for 2024. Oh, 250 Turnpike Road, First Development for the proposed Contractors Yard Building. They received their ZBA special permit for two uses and two buildings on one lot. They're requesting like a pre-application meeting with me and other town departments like fire, police, building, DPW, to get an ID, you know, to present like a concept plan and then talk about the project and get any initial feedback in their preparation of the plans. So I'm going to try to coordinate that maybe for next week. The planning board, it will be coming to the planning board for a site plan approval and that'll be a public hearing. So-
Yes, good question.
Sure.
So, so they submitted the same plans that they submitted to the ZBA that their attorney told me, well, those are just concept plans? Why, why aren't they submitting the approved site plan showing this new building on it? Because what they're showing is not in compliance with the site plan. And this is a modification. So shouldn't that be the baseline, what was previously approved?
Yes, and that will be one of my comments at the pre-application meeting.
Okay.
So what they're using is what they gave, what they presented at the zoning board. And it's like, to me, it's a concept. And that's what I'm going to call it. And I'll announce at the meeting that, you know, they do have an approval and this is not actually what's approved underneath. Existing conditions plan should be the existing conditions plan. And that's why we require ASBILs, too, because that becomes the next existing condition plan. Or they go out and do a new survey and an existing conditions plan. But you can't have it both ways, no existing condition and then no ASBILt and then no, you know, it's just a bad circle. So I'll address that at the meeting.
Okay.
It's more of a generic, here's bird's eye view. You know, are you worried about a hydrant too far away? Is the water surface coming in here? Water health might opine that, oh, well, you're, you're putting the building on the old septic system. How are you going to handle that? Make sure you do X, Y, Z, kind of a pre-application. And then I'll report back. So if any of you have any other comments, I'll send that out so you see it. But if you have comments that you want me to ask during that pre-application, just send them to me individually and I'll put it on, add it to my list. Thanks. Right. Let's see here. We're still waiting for, I think we're still waiting for written response to this tree and stone wall mitigation from the select board for the park project. So I believe the plants are in and the wall is built. But I think planning board had asked for something in writing.
We, we were informed on Friday that that will be coming.
Excellent. That's good news. And then, um, there was a, you know, illegal tree removal on, at a location in town. And I think the select board, in conjunction with the tree warden, designee were working on that still, too.
We have enough data on that one, too. So, um, what was requested? Because there was a letter stuck in a door and it's unclear whether anybody ever received it. They were supposed to reach out to either the planning board or the select board. And we haven't heard anything. And that was, when was that, in November?
Yeah.
November?
Yeah. Not knowingly, anyway. I, I, we haven't gotten any calls from anyone.
So our request was to, what was Ms. Houlihan's request? Would you like to speak to that?
Sure. I was very clear of our expectation. And that is a letter sent certified mail to the person who illegally moved. They have two weeks to schedule an appointment to try and discuss with the tree warden and the planning board because it's scenic road. Or they can pay the $500 maximum fee that Mass General, uh, Mass General. Mass, yeah, it's Mass, I'm thinking the hospital, yeah. Mass General laws impose. And so our feeling is that that needs to happen. They agreed that they would send it. I think I might just send a reminder and I'll copy you, Karina and Colleen and Mimi, just to remind exactly what we discussed at that meeting on Friday. Because I feel like he might need that.
I'll ask a question. Do, do we have a process for this? Like, why don't they just send him a fine? I know they should have a meeting. It should have been a certified letter. But it was an illegal removal. It's in Mass General law. Why don't they just fine the person? Say, pay this. You broke the law. I, I hate to say it, but I mean, I think that these sorts of things should be explained in like a scenic road policy guideline. We've started a couple, both of those, and it may be time to bring that back. But for education, for other people, they should know that. But when you move into town, you should know it. And we're not the only town that has it. So-
Well, it's Mass General law.
It's Mass General law. So, um, like, time's up. I, I mean, I have no say in this at all. But I think, you know, my preference would be, we have no real process. So unless anybody's afraid that they're going to get like, you know, a lawyer after them, why don't they just send the $500 fine?
If I may, I, I agree with you, Deb. I don't know what's the point of having somebody come in that's, the tree's already gone and having a discussion. So I, I guess we, we need to work out a better process with the select board because my concern is you're going to have select board vote, oh, it's just a tree. And you're going to have planning board say, yeah, but there's a fine attached to it. And then what happens? So I, I agree, Deb, that, that the law is this. And, and that's really what should happen. And unfortunately, short of educating the person, I think, you know, the, the fine is the fine. And again, I just have a fear you're going to have two boards split on this.
So I think the worry is that no communication was ever received by those people. So you can't leave a letter that's like four pages long and knock on a door and just leave it. So there's been no acknowledgement or, or any type of communication to these people that we know of that they've received. So I think that's part of the certified letter. And so the request was to say, schedule an appointment or pay the fine. And our guess is that they're just going to write a check. But if they don't write, if they don't schedule something or make a call to schedule something, then they get fined the $500. But I do think there's a education process that it behooves us to educate people if they don't know.
Yeah, I, I agree also. I just want to say, I don't think we should be sending four-page letters to anybody. I'm done after about a page and a half. So in this process, we should develop a template of what that letter text should say. And it should say, you broke the law. And here's a picture and you need to pay this fine.
So Marnie, do we know who's writing the letter?
So Bill wrote the original letter. So that was, and he hand, he walked it over to hand deliver it to, to them. They knocked on the door. No one received, so he left it in the door.
Do we know if the letter referenced Mass General laws so that these people know there, there's no-
I think it did.
Cut and dry.
Yeah.
Are we probably have it?
I think he did. My recollection was he did.
That's fine.
He did provide specifics, but I think they can just basically say, we never got anything.
Got it. Okay.
Had it, okay.
Where's Karina? I remember seeing it now. It was nicely, nicely written, but it's too long.
Okay, okay.
governs public shade tree removals. And it's referenced several times in Chapter 87, Section 6, Chapter 40, Section 15(c).
It's very thorough.
The relevant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, Karina, thank you. That's, I just wanted to make sure.
And the letter was like a page and a half, but it had all these pictures and stuff.
Okay. Yeah. I thought you might ask that, Lisa.
I don't know if that's a good or bad thing, Karina.
Okay, that's all I have for planner's report.
Uh, so on the agenda, it says December 19 minutes. The planning board had no quorum on December 19th, so there was no meeting.
I think we had a working group that day.
It was a working session at one, Jesse. So there were two meetings that-
I apologize. I was assuming, that was, I was thinking about the select board thing.
They're not in yet.
Okay, thank you.
But the other two are.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 8th, 2024.
Second, but recused. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Demure, yes.
Brascio, yes.
And a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2024, for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Discussion item is, I, well, did not attend, so I will be abstaining from the vote.
Just any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Houlihan, yes. Demure, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Um, motion to adjourn?
Second.
For motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Houlihan, yes. Demure, yes.
Brascio, yes.
Oh, thank you.